Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in City Hall Council Chambers. As we always do, we will have our invocation and then our pledge. And just a reminder to everyone that it's just over three months or two months after the most devastating hurricane we ever had in Manatee County and city of Bradenton. So, welcome to the final meeting of the year. And keep that in mind that we're working very hard to get our city and it's already back in order. So, I just wanted to say that at the front of the meeting where people will hear it. It's only been just over 60 days. So, congratulations to our town and the city and the county for doing such a good job to get us back where we are. So, thank you. At this time, we'll call Pastor Don Steriano with Kingdom Life Church, Christian Church, to give us our invocation and then our pledge.
Good morning, everyone. I love this city. Would you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, thank you for the city of Bradenton, our citizens, employees, department heads, and our city leaders. I declare the blessings of heaven upon them all on every front of their life. Bless their health so they can run with endurance to the assignments that are set before them. Bless their mind with godly wisdom as they make decisions today. Bless their dreams and the desires of their hearts in accordance to your will. And bless their loved ones, their children, their children's children, and generations to come. I pray for our beloved city to prosper and continue to prosper, for your world to manifest in this one, for evil to decline and righteousness to increase, for love, unity, honor, joy, and peace to be our hallmark. May the affections of our heart be turned to you, and may we serve with the heart of a king and rule with the heart of a servant. And now, Numbers, Chapter 6, 24. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. Is in the name of Jesus the Christ I pray. And everyone said amen.
Amen.
Please join us and all veterans in the audience with the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Chief Bevins to come or call the meeting to order and ask Chief Bevan to come forward and Pastor Don to come up with her because we didn't want him to leave before we talked about this. Chief?
Because I know this is going to be a long meeting, I'll do it at the front end. The mayor graciously allowed me some time. As several of you know, we held our 16th? Isn't that great that you lose count, right? Our 16th Annual Honoring the Badge this past week. And we wanted to have Pastor Don stay here because as many of you may or may not know, this all started with him and Chief Razlowski so many years ago when it was just an idea to, you know, identify the less fortunate kids in our community and do something a little special for them. I don't know the numbers. I'm going to say it was only like five kids back 16 years ago. I know it was more. But I'm so incredibly honored to report, we served nearly 120 families, 120 families this past year. The generosity from donors such as Walmart, Coq Chevrolet, you know, even the mayor opened his wallet to make this such an incredible event. And, you know, we touched so many lives. If you got an opportunity to see our social media posts, you saw really what it did for folks in our community. I just wanted to tell you thank you, what you do in this community and the fact that you have fostered this participation and this willingness. More officers, more personnel than ever showed up. Every single family had somebody to shop with, and I don't think we had any repeats. It was state attorney's office came out, fire department came out all time high. And Chief, I know you had to reach into your own wallet, you know? It was really just an incredible event for all of you, you all there. I don't know if you want to say anything, but-
Turn the microphone.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an honor to serve and, you know, just give the Lord, you know, all the glory and honor. I'm reminded of the words of Mary when the angel Gabriel told her her assignment, and she said, "Let it be done unto me according to your word." And that's what we want to do. But thank you very much.
And I think one of the things that over the years that I've been able to attend and you just look at the kids, you know, because some of them may not have something under the tree at Christmas time, but they were able to get something and with the great donors that do things. And then it was so impressive this year to see who was there to help the children. And over the years, you'd have to recycle two or three times because kids would have to wait till you get through. This year, we might have had extra people at one point that we didn't have to go around. But just thank you Pastor Don for getting that started. Thank you to everybody up here that was able to, even I think an elf showed up.
I was gonna say, I forgot to call out the elf.
Yeah, the elf showed up.
That's what all the pictures on-
We had the Grinch, one of our officers that was, she had a great time at it, and then also-
And justice was served and the Grinch was rehabilitated.
Rehabilitated. And Santa Claus, which is one of our retired fire department employees that just-
This is going on on YouTube.
Santa Claus was there, but what obviously staffs.
And I may not have been there physically, but I sent a family representative.
Good, thank you. Yep.
Yes, with extra kid.
And also, Mayor, the, just to shout out, our Fill the Truck event on Saturday, again, hundreds of toys. We got money. It was a great event. Hope Family Services is going to benefit from that. So many organizations tomorrow. It's one of my favorites. It just started last year, the grandparents of children, it's their grandchildren who they wind up raising because of problems and issues are going to come to the auditorium tomorrow to shop for a lot of the toys that we've collected. Also on Thursday, we, it just kind of shows you our regional touch. We've been identified as, as very active participants in giving and Christmas. So, we're, a few of us are going over to St. Joseph's Hospital to provide gifts for some of our sick children. And, and it's really just incredible what we as a city and a community do for our-
And when you say grandparents are shopping, they're really selecting, correct?
Well, yes, yes. For their, actually, sometimes the grandkids just come. And so, if you all want to cry, show up over there, you know, tomorrow, and I think it's at 3 o'clock.
And I think, again, with the generosity of those who can, that we've been a lucky, lucky community and coming out of what we've had this past summer, there's a lot of families that are still struggling and that's helped them get through that moment. And, and that's the reason I mentioned, we're only 60 days out plus from Milton, and still the community is supporting those who can. So, any other comments or thank you very much? We just wanted you to be here, Pastor Don. Thank you. All right, moving on, Madam Clerk.
There are not any presentations or proclamations scheduled this morning?
All right, so at this time, a citizen comment will be accepted. And the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city, comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. I do have two cards. First, I have Mike Meehan. If you come forward, state your name and your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. My concern this morning is the causeway. And the reason I'm concerned about the causeway is because you may have seen me out there in my golf cart sometime during the last eight years, picking up litter and debris. So, it's something that I really am dedicated trying to keep the causeway looking good. My number one concern right now at the causeway is the erosion under the sidewalks and the possibility of further collapse. And as yet, no repairs have been done on parts of the sidewalk that have already collapsed. And that's just past the first bridge on the north side. My number two concern is the DeSoto Speedway character of State Route 64. Enforcement placed between Idia Street and the pavilion could seriously curtail the racetrack mentality that operates between 75th and the Island Bridge. I was going out to church last week, and I got, I got passed by a guy at 7:30 in the morning doing 90. 7:30 on Sunday morning. It's out of control out there. My number three concern is the destruction of the newly installed revetment on the north side of the causeway. Will daily 10,000-pound horse trailer traffic seriously damage this road and parking area improvement? My number four concern is damage to the newly renovated and upgraded parking areas on the north side of the causeway that have recently been filled in and corresponding smelly fill has been neutralized. After the repair, will the return of horses and trailers again seriously degrade parking on the north side of Palmasola Bay? My last concern is the condition of water in Palmasola Bay. This red light going across the bottom is the pollution readings, bacterial readings for North Palmasola Bay. As you can see from this, 10 of the last 12 months have shown average bacterial contamination above 71 E. coli per 100 milliliters of water. That is a danger zone reading, and it's been the average for 10 of the last 12 months. Is it time for a mini The Mermaid warning board to alert beach users to the danger posed by bacterial contamination? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Wiley Green. Thank you. Please state your name and your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Wiley Green, City of Bradenton, 2015, 25th Avenue West. I was looking at the consent agenda, and I had some questions and concern about AC and AD.
Mr. Green, could you speak up just a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing you.
I said I had some concerns about the consent agenda on AC and AD, the east side drainage. We have a church that possibly may have to deal with a drainage situation that we really don't want or care for, and people in the community don't want it either, but somehow somebody keep trying to push this agenda through. So, I was just wondering what this one of the areas that this drainage, and hopefully the council can maybe go by there and just see how that would be so out of place for two churches that have been historically there over 30 years. It can be other ways of doing this. It doesn't have an effect on our church or the area, so why are we doing this? But I know it's a hidden agenda somewhere. Again, we'd like to thank the mayor and the council and whoever was a part of removing all of that debris and appliances on First Street and 13th Avenue. That was a great effort. I know it was a choice that someone had to make. It was other places you could have put it, but that was the easiest and the quickest, and thank you for doing that. And on 17th Avenue as well, hats off to you. But again, I really, really like to be concerned about that east side on the agenda to see what's behind that. Hopefully, we can really go back and see about this land, this surplus land, like we did the San Powell in the workshop, and it had a big volume where they went back. And we go back on that, and we can see that we've been acquiring and been there over 20 years and been trying to acquire the land, but somehow it's keep being blocking this. Now, all of a sudden, plans are coming up, even though I've been before this council over 40 years, even when I worked here at the City of Bradenton, because one of my supervisors in Lawton Park, some of you all know, told me sometime, "You need to go and check it out, especially when it comes to solid waste." That was another thing. You guys brought up about solid waste in the workshop. Again, we keep saying, let's be the top tier. Let's get the highest rate, and we can keep some guys. We won't have to keep dealing with these temporary guys, and that'll be a great step. I know we talked about it about two or three years ago, and, but we didn't follow through. We were trying bonuses and other plans, but that didn't work. So, we set the example and keep being the friendly city that we say we are, and we'll see that we can keep some long-term employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, but so at this time, I'll kind of address some of the things. I was actually out driving past the causeway yesterday, and there is a lot of work going on, on the shoulders and putting in so the road doesn't collapse. Erosion control, they're working on it. Obviously, we have an interlocal agreement now with the county that they're going to be working on a lot of the, the other things that happened from the hurricanes and that and their, you know, it's a process now. And one of the things that, that I kind of was looking at that yesterday when I'm driving around the city, we are actually better than I think most thought we would be compared to past storms, and, and that was the worst storm we've ever had, those two together with the flooding and then the wind. But I think one of the things that we are now into is methodically now trying to fix the, and I don't want to say one-offs, but the things that are unique. And a sidewalk on the causeway is unique, but it needs to be fixed. And I know the county is working on that. We've had conversations, Mr. Perry and I, with Mr. Bishop, and he's working through that. They're trying to just strategically figure it out. Us in the city, you know, we found some things, and I appreciate the people that, that do a lot of these social media things, even the things I wouldn't say here that may not be so nice about Bradenton. But when you have a Christmas tree in a hole on a street that symbolizes the hole in the street, well, unfortunately, with the water table and the rain we've had, there's been a lot of situations, so they're on a list. You can ask Mr. Lee, Mr. Williams, and things that we're getting them, we're getting them to people, and they're fixing them. And then during the day, Public Works has another one-off happen, and they've got to mobilize to fix that. So, those are, but we do appreciate any citizens that are out there. If you see something, send it to us. And that was one of the things, because sometimes things will get missed, and sometimes they get on a list that, you know, is a long list. Electrically issues, you know, and I'll say it right now just for the council. We have a lot of electrical issues with our light poles. Unfortunately, the snowflakes around the light poles aren't going to be put up this year. It's got to the point where if the electric doesn't work, there's no reason to put them up this year. They will be back next year. And I noticed Palmetto wasn't able to do theirs. The Green Bridge, half, four or five of the light poles were blown down. So, it's kind of unique that some nights the Green Bridge lights are on and some nights they're not. I don't, all of a sudden, they just started popping on the other night on the ends, but not in the middle because there's no poles. But those things are happening, and those are going to continue to happen probably over the next year. So, it's going to take some time. Again, we had Dave Tomasco come in from Sarasota Bay Estuary, talk about some of the issues, and we're still studying that with some of the horses and that. And again, there's probably a number of five or six or seven things that could be causing some of that on the north bay. And the number one cause of that is one entry and exit of the water. We've said many times, when that was built, or when that was designed, it was designed to have two bridges on each end, so you could have a flushing situation where water flows. The water doesn't flow very well, but if you look at the numbers, we've been in the green quite a few times by the people that study that. Now, is it perfect? No. But, you know, we're trying to manage and still be a friendly city to everyone that wants to use it. So, those are some of the things that I see. And then I know the drainage, the drainage to this board and as well as stormwater, parts of it, parts of wastewater and our freshwater is very important to this board. And we're going through our face it and fix it mode, and that's something that we will continue to do as we, we work. And, you know, there's some areas that with this year's season from June through it, that I used to get email after email about flooding in certain areas. I got no emails this year from those areas. I didn't get an email either saying, "Thank you for fixing it," you know, which, but that, I didn't expect it. But, you know, I did drive by there, and I know all of us were in the areas that were addressed. But some of it is going to take a little bit longer, but it's not important. And from this board, and I say for myself, there is no ulterior motive of taking something from anybody other than trying to fix areas of drainage, stormwater, and making our city better. So, any other comments by the council?
Just I concur. We've got, I, I've met with several different homeowners' associations and emails. They're concerned about the streetlights. And I, I think it's important. It's not as easy as taking the, the lift truck, unscrewing a light bulb, and screwing one back in, that there are issues between the flooding and the wind, that something that in the past may have taken two hours for a city crew to fix, they're having to be detectives and figure it out and backtrack it, and it can take them two days for one light. So, you know, patience is a virtue, and, and I think we need to continue to keep asking the good Lord above for more patience.
Well, I think we all know that when you have six feet of water come up from the river into homes and up the river areas, that electrical is going to have an issue. And it's very important not to try to get too much on before it's totally checked. And, and the bandwidth and, and our staff, there Mr. Perry all the way, with Mr. Lee and his whole staff are really, shouldn't say Colonel Lee, I said Mr. Lee, but just Colonel Lee, is working hard. But when you have 50 work orders and you're trying to get to 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then all of a sudden 10 more come in, and, you know, again, the crew's working, and we're trying to look at outside help too. And that's one of the things that I think is very important while still managing the rest of the city. And I think you brought up a good point, Mr. Green, about solid waste. That is a huge situation. And, and I've said all along that sometimes you have to change to get better. And if you change and don't get better, then you've got to regroup and figure things out. And this community, you know, we worked a way to keep a portion of recycling in. It's not working how I had hoped it would work, but now what's that next step? And that's why we had a workshop last week, and that was one of the main topics, is how are we going to make it better? We did throw a lot of money at it. The money doesn't always work, and it's the, the people out there that, you know, want to work, and, you know, it's, it's better to go do two hours of Uber and you make more money than getting on the back of a garbage truck and work, you know? So, people have realized it's hard work, and we admire the people that do it. But how do we make it better? And, you know, I mean, the goal of this board has always been to still recycle, and if we can bring back curbside recycling in a way, there may be an opportunity to do that and still do it better. So, you know, the storm, I think, gave us a reset at a certain point, and that's, you know, how we're going to continue to, to process through that. Government, and I'll say it, and I think all my colleagues up here, council will agree with it, we're too, government works too slow. So, how do we make it faster? But we've got processes, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So, yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, perfect. Yes, ma'am.
I just also want to say or reiterate, Mr. Green, that this council is aware of the historical nature of those churches, and it is not of our intent to damage that in any way, but we, and I'm not going to say but because that doesn't cancel what I just said. I mean that we have to figure out a way how we can take care of the drainage problems and so forth in that area, which, which has improved. But don't think for half a second that we're going to not consider the historic nature of those churches.
Mr. Perry?
Pull the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. As it relates to Mr. Green's comments and Councilwoman Coachman's comments regarding the appreciation for the historical nature of the churches and that area generally, the cultural sensitivities of longstanding legacy and history of the importance of that community. That community, from what I understand and dealing with a lot of our engineering staff, has historically had flooding problems. This item that is on the agenda is a east side flooding control project that is a collaboration of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and it's a grant. The item that's really on the agenda is fairly technical. It's revisions of standard terms and conditions, as well as some fairly other minor technical types of issues. So, it's not that we're changing anything substantially on what the overall plan is for flood control into those neighborhoods. And I think Mr. Wiley made, Green made a really good point as related to, if you heard it subtly, it doesn't affect my church, which I've been out to before personally. It could affect other churches, and, and we're mindful of that. And that's what we're attempting to do, is to put a flood control system in that helps the, a broader swatch of the neighborhood. It won't help the entirety of this city. There's no doubt. There's isolated individual flood control areas that are, that are problematic, but this handles that particular area. Lastly, I want to point out to some of the comments was, we have made a significant investment in increasing wages when I first came on at solid waste. As I remember, when I first came on, out of a staffing complement of approximately 51 people, we had on the order of 15 to 16 vacancies. We were competing with what were, at the time, kind of the e-commerce of commercial CDL, CDL Driver's License. This council, with their support, really has increased wage increases probably somewhere in the order of 15 to 20%, which is fairly significant when you think about it over a three-year period. We were hiring back then solid waste workers that I believe it was somewhere on the order of $12, $13 an hour, and McDonald's was hiring at 15. Well, now our starting is not, without the CDL in the area, probably 17, 18, 19, or more, and CDL's even more than that. It has helped significantly address the staffing, recruitment, and retention issue. And, and it's cost us a fairly good amount of money to do it, but it was worth it. And, and obviously, wages overall in the macroeconomy of the United States was suffering some imbalance, as we all may remember, economically after COVID, when we really didn't have a minimum wage, it was 785, I think federally, but McDonald's was paying 15. And so, we tried to address that, and it was mindful and thoughtful of you to, to support that. We did that. I hope Mr. Green appreciates that. It's still probably not as much as it, it maybe should be for that type of work. It's hard work, particularly in the summertime under certain environmental conditions. And then lastly, Mr. Green had said subtly that it doesn't involve my church, but I do have an interest in purchasing that property. As you all remember, that Mr. Green for the last three years has been up here asking to purchase a, kind of a swatch of property for property, for parking along his, I believe it's going to be west side to his property. We had actually done, and I have the paperwork here, I've been out there, as I said several times, I've worked with the, the Public Works Department significantly to see what we could do, because we own that property for storm control to do the east side project. So, we done, we, what we did was we did a conceptual plat of what we could, we could afford to provide. And it's probably good if I come down, because I want to set the record straight. It seems that every couple of times we come up, and I don't want you all thinking that we haven't been addressing this, I want to indicate here that this section, it's not very good. Let's see if I can blow it up just a little bit. This was a conceptual plaque that was done, as you can see, back in September of 2023. The line here basically indicated, this is Mr. Wiley's church itself, and Mr. Wiley wanted the property booked eventually to increase this parking on the, I believe it's west side of the building, in this orientation here, in this area. And this is generally speaking, the city's property for the east side storm control, which is a series of bioswells that run on the grid of the property line into lower lining areas for onsite retention. That's basically what the project is. The, the conceptual plaque showed a conceptual line. However, once we got into more architecture and engineering of the, of the bioswells and the construction that needed to be done, basically, it was indicated that this line needs to shift a little bit. We appraised this, this swatch that's existing right there, and the appraisal came in at $110,000, I believe, for that much property. Mr. Green said, "I don't want the stuff that's back here. It's all wooded. I don't want the stuff that's there." Okay, good enough. That's fine. We'll take the wooded stuff because it's low-lying, it still helps and the like. But again, the engineers come back and said, "We have to move this line slightly to the east to go from 180 feet from this property line here to the, to the east to 220 feet." So, we need more property. That's where we're at. We told, in this letter that was sent in November, in response to when Mr. Green came down for the CRA meeting, I believe that would have been in October this year, I was sitting in the audience, and I came up and addressed. So, I provided this letter, this fortin actually did, that's been handling this along with myself. And as it states in this, this end paragraph right here, "As the East Side Drainage Report Project is currently up to bid, project completion timeline is December 25. Additionally, I have recently been advised by Public Works that the anomaly and required disconnection retention fund is more than previously thought. The attached plaque, the plaque line down the middle shows the actual amount. City survey will complete the survey using the newly proposed property harness and provide description of the property. Ultimately, this may endure to your benefit as based upon my understanding from Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry writing it. You are interested in only obtaining additional parking area." So, he, the $110,000 might be a lot less. It might be a limited swatch, and we can surplus that to Mr. Green. However, we have to do that from procurement perspective for a lot less property that provides him parking, but it doesn't require him to come up with a market rate of 110,000. So, we are working to a solution. But, but I want, I want you all to fully understand that it's a fairly individualized process when I'd say working towards a solution, that most people that would come in, you know, we're the friendly city, so we deal with these folks that have lived here for a long time, like Mr. Green, that's worked for the city on an individualized basis. But I can stand- But I can stand here before you and say, I've put a lot of time into trying to find a solution that'll work for Mr. Green. And I hope it's appreciated. That's all I'm saying. And I've done it on behalf of council because we've all worked together. We love Mr. Green, we love the area, we love what he does. But, but I hope it's, he understands that I just can't sign off, I wouldn't, can't recommend to you to say, it's a great church, just give them the property. We can't do that. We're not allowed to.
Any other comments? Ms. Coachman?
Um, over the past few years, yes, we have put a lot of time into some issues that have been longstanding, and I appreciate that we're giving it that kind of time because the decades beforehand, no one made a move. So at least we are trying to resolve these things. Um, but, but I, I do have to say, I understand the frustration, um, because it's been so long, but I, I too agree with you that we all should kind of take a step back and appreciate that this wouldn't have been three or four years ago. Um, so hopefully we can come to a resolution. Um, and then back to the salaries, this council does want to make it, um, more, um, palatable to work for, um, for the city and, and the solid waste department because, I mean, that's pretty difficult to make that palatable. And increasing the salary is part of it, and we, we're still not hitting the mark, you know, for surrounding, um, companies or areas. But we also have to be mindful of what else we do with that, and I think that's where we are now. We're trying to figure out what is it more than just raising salaries? Now we've got to make some other considerations. We did the same for PD. We raised the salary, but, you know, it's still how we manage and, and treat, you know? But that was just something I wanted to add.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move for the approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item six E for a very brief discussion.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
There's, but I would like to remove something as well.
So.
I withdraw the second.
Well, let's, let's, um, so Ms. Barnaby has a motion and you want to remove E, correct?
Right, and, but I am willing to accept friendly amendments to other items.
Ms. Coker?
Six AJ.
AJ. Okay, and Ms. Moore?
Six AA and actually six AC and six AL.
AL, AC and AL?
Let me make sure that it is L. A, where is it now? I don't see it. Oh, yes. Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay, so there's a motion, um, to approve the consent agenda with E, AJ, AA, AC, and AL being discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right, we'll vote on the motion to approve consent agenda minus E, AJ, AA, AC, and AL. Um, so we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, um, on the consent agenda, item six E, um, we received a proposal to purchase property that was surplus, and the proposal came in for $100. This is a very, this is a good sized piece of property and there's a good sized house on, um, and I understand having it on the consent agenda with the suggested motion that we reject the offer. Um, and that is going to be my motion that we reject the offer. The reason I'm doing it this way is I think sometimes, well, people go, well, they approved the consent agenda, but without looking at what the very specific items are, and that this item was to reject it. And I want to be very clear and very transparent that that's what we're doing. We're rejecting this offer. So that's my motion, Mr. Mayor, move to reject the offer to purchase the property at 2104 12th Avenue West.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one to reject the offer.
Yeah, yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Mrs. Coker?
AJ, six AJ.
Yes.
Um, I had brought up, let me get to it. This is for Southern Parkway, and if I'm correct, this is the, um, rails, not the rails, the Sun Trail portion of it. And I know as your rep on the, um, board, that they were said that they would hold some public meetings on this because I'm very concerned that, it was a long time ago, and I know Councilwoman Barnaby had, had expressed the same concerns, that, that, what their intention is on that Southern Parkway, it's going to take away all that on-street parking. And I, we felt like it had been discussed so long ago that maybe that they would hold additional public hearings. And at the MPO meeting, I was assured that, they said that yes, they would do that. I don't, to my knowledge, nothing's been done since then. And is with, with this vote, is that negating that? I don't know.
I didn't interpret it that way. I interpreted that we were moving forward and that we were going to schedule the meetings is how I interpret it. Maybe I'm not, I'm not a member of the MPO, so maybe I'm not correct, but.
Well, Mr. Mayor is the chair.
Yeah, no, I interpret that we still were going to have the public meetings, and the reason what, when several years ago, and I'm, I'm thinking probably seven or eight years ago, we paved one half of Southern Parkway, um, by the school and around. Um, the other half was supposed to be done in a cycle pretty quick, but because of all of the other things going on, we have held off on that, and that road needs to be paved more than not. And it might, the whole road might maybe, it's been eight or nine years ago, but that what I understood was that we were going to still go through the process. One of the things that we're hearing, and I think that's very important as we go through the trail system, is if we don't start the plan it, we will never have it. And, you know, I go to 33rd Street Court that, you know, we know what we lived through that on some, but the on-street parking has been eliminated to do a trail, and people said, well, you can only go a block. But if you don't do that block, you're never going to do the next block and the next block. And we basically either have to buy into the trail system or say we're not doing it because we know that probably one of the worst things in the trail system is to put it on Manatee Avenue. There's just no way to do it. So they're trying to find different alternatives, but I still think that, you know, it's going to be, still get out there before it's, this isn't a final vote, I didn't think it was.
That was my question. And, and I mean, I, there, there's, you know, it's the divided boulevard and, or Parkway, and, you know, what about using the center of it? I don't know, because I, you know, that's very technical and everything. I just am concerned, you know, that all those residents need to understand, because I, I know that they did a couple of blocks in Village Green, and I did get a lot of calls on that.
And like I said, 33rd Street Court, we got some pushback, but it's, it's still something. I don't know, Colonel Lee, do you have anything about, you know, they, they look at every alternative there is, and the only way we're ever going to be a multimodal type town is start somewhere. And we may never be here to see it totally done, but, you know?
Got to start.
We got to start. And I know we don't have the railroad areas that Sarasota had where they put that big trail through areas, but if we don't start now, and again, it, it, um, if we'd had a bridge done in the 90s, it would have affected people on both sides of the river, but we'd had a third bridge and the traffic wouldn't be as bad as it is. If we truly want to get multimodal, we have to do some things. And, uh, it's tough, but I agree with you. Conversations are important, and I think they're still, that's still part of the process.
So what are we approving then? Just that we are committed to it, or are we committed to the plan now?
Um, yes, Mr. Perry, pull the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if you look at page one of the local agency program agreement, it'll give you a general idea of what, what this project actually is. And specifically as it relates to section, uh, two, it consisted of adding a 10-foot concrete sidewalk to fill gaps between, um, 43rd Street and 26th to accommodate bike lane, bike lane buffer, on-street parking, and travel lanes in both directions, uh, with the roadway known as Southern Parkway. Uh, I think it's been explained that this is part of the connectivity of the multimodal project, um, that we're trying to do. It was initially proposed in 2021 when I came here to go down Manatee Avenue, which was a death trap to me, to put, to put bicycles on Manatee Avenue. Um, and the estimated cost is $926,000. Uh, it'll be paid for and reimbursable through DOT. It has a completion date of, I believe it is 12/31/28, so we have to have it done by 12/21/31, uh, 2028. And as it relates to community meetings and outreach, that will have to be done. So this right now is to try to design it and build it.
Okay. Then, then I'll move to approve.
All right.
Second.
Second, Ms. Barnaby. We've had discussion. Start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Approved. Mrs. Moore?
Um, I just wanted to point out for six A, um, that the task completion date is summer of 2026. Um, I know that, um, I know that Public.
Six AA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Six AA, right?
Right, yes, six AA.
Make sure, thank you.
Um, this is regarding the, um, expansion of Lift Station 3 and the demolition of Lift Station 13. Um, I know that we're going to be doing some temporary work and regarding Lift Station 13 in the interim, um, but I just wanted to reiterate in case, in case you all have not had a chance to actually see it, that.
Tell us the location of Lift Station 13 for the public.
Sure. Lift Station 13 is located on Riverside Drive East, um, northeast, in between 24th Street and, um, I believe it's Chauncey, where Chauncey curves there. Um, and it's one that's right on the river and, and there's always a generator there, and it just looks awful. I mean, when I say it looks awful, I, I can't paint enough of a picture. And I'm really concerned that, you know, that we're going to go through another storm season, and I, I just want to, I know that we're doing, you know, it's here and we're doing things, and that is very exciting to me, but, um, but I just kind of want to bring to your attention that it's, it's really a dire situation, um, from what I can observe. Um, and the same kind of ties in with, um, the reason why I wanted to put polls six AC, but it actually also speaks to the one that Councilwoman, uh, Coker pulled, which was the streetscape. Um, I, there is a plan for a second Avenue streetscape. I know you all are aware of that. And all of, and the, and the east side drainage, um, plan, all of these things I would love to see also, uh, happen in my area, um, which I know, I know I keep bringing that up, but I just, you know, I feel like it's part of my responsibility to let you guys know what I hear from people and what I observe as far as needs and whatnot. Um, so I look forward to having the second Ave streetscape, you know, on a consent agenda item in the future. And, um, and yeah, I just wanted to let you all know about the lift station and that it's really not great. If you ever have a chance to drive by there, you'll kind of get a feel for what I mean.
And then AL?
Uh, AL, yes. Um, oh, I just wanted to point out that when we had a chance to have our one-on-one, um, it doesn't look like this includes system projects, that that, um, this is the water reclamation facility master plan work assignment. I think a master plan is wonderful, um, and I think it's a great step forward. Um, I'd like to see eventually us get to a point where we are also master planning the other parts of the system, like this is in regards to the actual facility, um, but then eventually maybe we can master plan the, the other parts of the collection system.
Yes, and I, I'll address that. And we, Mr. Perry and I and others have had many meetings about where we're going with master planning and stuff, but as you just said, we don't want to go through another storm season and not at least be a little prepared. We were prepared, but we weren't prepared for 50-plus inches of rain in three months. Um, and that's where we had a lot of the issues. Um, later on, it was just catching up. We never were able to catch up. And I've learned about more things that eat stuff that I never wanted to know why, how a wastewater system plant works, but it's basically microorganisms that eat it. And as long as they're eating it, it's working, but when your system's overwhelmed and then they aren't eating it, then it's not working. And so all the different things that, uh, you learn. So that's part of, we got to get something done so we can be a little bit more prepared for today, and then also going forward through tomorrow and coming up. And, and, um, we had a great meeting last night with some people that I think will actually maybe give us opportunity, even if we, as things go forward, don't ever use them, it would still be a process that will actually say, five years from now, wow, that council did a great job at making sure that we were in a good place if that ever happens again like that. And, you know, the I and I, and, uh, you know, we're working some other things that there may be some money to speed that up. But again, I had, I don't know if I've said it publicly, said it to some people, but had a friend call me and say, how long, if you had all the money you need it right now, how long would it take to fix your system? Probably many years. But, well, he goes, what are you going to do? I said, we're still on that same pace because we're working on the money with the lobbyists, with others, with people getting grants, with things, because I say it from right and look at the public in the eye. We can't tax our way out of this. We've got to figure out how to do other things to get it done. So if we have another storm season like that next year or in the future, we're a little bit more prepared and, you know, I would still, you know, you're looking around the, the general Tampa Bay area, we're still lucky. You know, I don't want to say too much because things get jinxed at times, but, yeah, but anyway, so, um, so is that a motion to approve AA, AC, and AL, Ms. Moore?
It is.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Um, we've had discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. Item seven A is resolution 24101, and this is a public hearing.
Staff will come forward?
Hi, good morning, council. Jamie Schindelwolf with, um, planning staff. I'm just one moment. I do have something to pass out. Um, on this case, we have an agent authorization form for the architect that did not make it into the packet, so I have that for you all.
Thank you. Sure.
Can I take a look at that?
Sure. You want me to? Oh, sorry, I'm going to keep on. Now I'm making a mess.
And I will just do a real brief introduction just to get you all kind of sorted on where this is at. Um, this is a special use application for a public facility at 401 17th Avenue West in Bradenton, Florida. Um, here is that subject parcel. This came before you some time ago, um, for a different portion of the site for that public safety communications tower. Um, the future land use is res medium, which is a bit odd, and the zoning is R2. And so an R2 public facilities are considered a special use, and so that's why we're here before you today to ask for that permit. So I will now turn it over to the representatives from Manatee County to explain their project, and then I will come back.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So.
Can you state your name and affiliation?
My name is Maget Alsheikh, um, was an architect with OLC. Uh, we are the architects for this project, and, uh, this is to transform an abandoned building. This is existing building right now. It's abandoned for so many years, and we are transforming that into an animal resource welfare center that will help the community get the, uh, residents aware of how to deal with their pets, uh, how to, and we'll have a clinic there. We will have a training area for. We will have a training area for the dogs indoor and outdoor, and also a small pet area for adoption and teaching them.
And for the public, can you say who you're representing?
We are representing Manatee County.
Right. Manatee County Government, right?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
So this is existing building. It's just this small block, 3,600 square foot building, and the property line is almost there. We have the tower there and the juvenile detention area in the back there. So we are using this with approximate area of the site to provide that project. So this will be the look of the building after it's finished. We'll have a signage in here indicating the project, and we have the parking drop-off area and outdoor training area in here. This is the entry. We are keeping the same look of the building and adding to it. This is the backside, and this is a training area, outdoor training area, will be fenced six foot high. The requirement is four feet high, so we came to a resolution with the fire, marshal, and police that we will have slates on the bottom four feet, so not to obstruct the dogs from passing by, but still have the visual connection between the police and inside area. This is a layout, and this is the entry, how it will look. We'll have computer stations for how to know more about the pets and where to adopt them. And then we have the clinic in here, and this is just a walkthrough around the building, how that will-- it doesn't affect the community in any way. In the contrary, it adds value to the community and adds the enticement of people coming in and using that building to the benefit of their-- the residents and the pets.
And the tower is now up. It was put up last week. It's not connected to anything yet, but I think the structure is up.
So as we look inside, we have the reception area, the waiting area. We have the clinic here, the nursing patient room, and a surgery suite, medical office for the medical supplies. We have offices for the case studies, a meeting room, a break room, toilets, and we have cats, adoption, and meet and greet for the dogs, and a training, indoor training area, plus an outdoor training area in that space. So that's the project. It's very small, but it fits all the needs that are required by the animal group in Manatee County. We've been coordinating with them, with SARA, and we are-- that serves the needs of the community there. So--
Great. Yes, sir, Mr. Perry?
I think it's important to-- what's before council is a special use permit, basically. This particular piece of property is adjacent to our wastewater treatment plant on Seventeenth Avenue, and beyond the parcel that is due east of this, and have some important plans related to improvements of the wastewater treatment plant that's on that parcel. The lot line comes really adjacent just to this property between the city's property on a northbound, southbound basis, and the county property with the juvenile detention center sitting southbound of this area. I just was wondering if we could find out a little bit about where you're all at in the architecture and engineering of this.
We completed the 100% document. The CMR is going to be approved or ready to sign, so we're ready to proceed.
Put it out for bid for construction?
Yes, and we already done the pre-submitted meeting. We had all the comments, and we responded to that. We have it ready on the communication.
What about the canals?
The canals?
Yeah, I didn't see canals depicted.
It's just, it's not the canals. It's mainly, like, few cats will be there, so there will be-- people will go and meet them and then adopt them, but they will not be permanently in that location.
So it's an adoption center, basically?
It's adoption, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't fully understand the purpose. I'm on animal welfare. I didn't fully understand what this particular facility was doing. I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, as far as more animal welfare.
Yeah, so I'd love to ask Ms. Kochar and then Ms. Coker--
I think my question was kind of related to what you're about to say, because I understand it's going to be a portion for adoption, and you're saying that those animals won't be housed there, so they're going to be transported there daily?
That's--
I mean, I just wanted to know the capacity of, you know, because you're going to house them in some--
We don't have that, you know, onboarding facility and meeting regularly, but it just, you know, they would come in the morning, whatever, pick up, adopt it, yes.
And then they come and transport them. And it's also a medical facility, so what about--
Yeah, so the clinic here, we'll have the clinic here, so the nurse. We have a treatment room. We have the scrub room for the surgery, and then we'll have a surgery suite.
But you do have capacity for animals who have to stay over a short length of time, or they just get their treatment or surgery and go home?
That's the answer.
Good morning. Sarah Brown, Deputy Director for Community and Veteran Services with Manatee County. So the surgery that would take place there, and I'll go into kind of what this is, this is kind of our attempt at doing something really unique, and it's not something municipalities usually do. We're trying to prevent animals from coming into the facility. So we know that we're never going to adopt our way out of the pet overpopulation crisis. So this is our way of trying to keep people and pets together, so providing resources. We've surveyed the county and kind of found out, what are those resources that we need to do to help people keep their pets? We think everybody deserves to have a pet, and sometimes financials don't allow you to do that. So this is really addressing that. So with the clinic, that would be accessible veterinary care, so it wouldn't be-- it would be very simple things, spay and neuter surgeries that would be provided through the Bisel Foundation and our partnership with them, so it wouldn't be another cost to the county or anything. It would really be able to help people get those resources accessibly. The other thing that we see is, you know, sometimes dogs might not have great behavior, so this-- the training would be offered to folks in the community to help them work through those issues so they can keep their pets. So the adoptions is more of kind of a side dish, like, maybe there's a dog that needs a little special attention, could go hang out there for the day, and then go back to our beautiful Bishop facility.
Okay. So then, so you wouldn't be part of the, what is it called, trap, neuter, release? You wouldn't be doing anything like that? It would have to be animals that are specifically owned by--
These are owned, yes. This is to help our community and--
Not the spay.
Yeah. The owned, something that we-- yeah, that wouldn't be a part of this.
Okay.
All right, Ms.--
My question might be for council. The way this is written, the special use is for public facility. Is there anything that keeps it that it's only to do with the animal, or can it be any public facility after this?
No, we have a specific description in there. There's not only, we describe it as an animal resource center, but it's also a site plan that's attached, so I think we've--
So you can't come back and just say, oh, well, this is still going to be a public facility, but it's going to be for--
Correct.
You know, okay. Okay.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. Looking at the outside training area, my question is, are you going to be doing things mainly during the day or on the weekend? I don't see any outside lighting, and my concern is any outside lighting that may affect the neighborhood.
It's mainly up to the doctor desk, so it's nothing after night, after dark.
Thank you.
And I think one of the things that-- it was kind of with, like, our PSOC. We wouldn't have built a new PSOC, because it would have been too expensive, but we were able to remodel a building we had. Manatee County is looking at how they can not only help a population that might be able, instead of taking their pet to be put down, or, you know, we have a no-kill, but still stuff happens, and also trying to utilize a facility that can be remodeled into a more efficient, and you think about it, for development, who wants to be next to what's there? The wastewater treatment plant. So we're trying to work some of that into the process. And obviously, we put the tower there to move it out of downtown for public safety, but also to be in an area that doesn't affect as much, you know, from the standpoint of looks. And, you know, but it's, you know, working to say, hey, let's-- in collaboration for public safety, not only then for animal welfare, and keep it going. Anybody else? All right, so I think that's all the questions, so we'll go to the next step for the public hearing. Yep. All right. Anything else from staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, all right. Yep, that's why--
All right. Good morning again. Jamie Schindolf with the Planning Department, and I have been sworn. So as stated, you know, the future land use is res medium, which does not-- though that is a residential future land use, it does not expressly prohibit public facility uses or anything of that nature. The zoning is R2. The proposed request has been described by the applicant. A public facility is described as any plant or structure owned or proposed by a public agency, government body, or public utility, but not including offices. Here is a site plan, a black and white, you know, version, not as pretty as the one presented by the architect, but you can see here, as they showed, the proposed animal welfare resource center there, as well as that outdoor training area. You can also see the renovation of the parking area, because right now, it is not in great condition. Here is the building as it stood when I posted a sign for the Planning Commission hearing, so November. That's what the building looked like. So when we look at our general special use standards, this is what they are. It's also in the staff report. And so this is a redevelopment of an existing building on a site that meets these criteria, so I won't go through them one by one. Looking at these required criteria that can be cited as reasons for approval or denial of this application, the project will use existing ingress and egress that is sufficient. They are restriping the parking area, as I've stated, and have indicated that 18 spaces will be provided for this use. Animals will not be sheltered at the facility long term. And as far as refuse and utilities go, the county is contracted with commercial refuse companies, and they will use existing utilities. Signage has been submitted that is in compliance with our sign regulations. The land and building appear adequate, and the facility is not directly adjacent to any homes. It is adjacent to an empty lot and other county facilities, so staff is not concerned with compatibility. I will note that this does fall under the public facility definition. The overall use of the property, however, doesn't really comply with the future land use designation, as it is residential. So we have recommended, as we did with the-- when the tower came in, that the county eventually do an amendment to kind of bring everything more in line with our future land use and to suit their own future needs. Overall, it appears to generally meet the criteria for special use approval, and Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the special use permit unanimously. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Moore?
Ms. Schindolf, can you just elaborate a little bit on what you just said about you'd like the county to kind of bring things in line with the future use?
Yeah, there, for whatever reason, they were designated-- the property was designated residential medium for their future land use and R2, which is a residential zoning district, and it clearly is not going to be a residential property. It's owned by the county. They have different facilities they're placing there. So it's just in the future, there's a chance, if they were to rezone or do an amendment to the comp plan, that they wouldn't necessarily have to go through so many public hearings when they want to, you know, put some sort of new facility. But as of now, I mean, that's the way it's designated, and a rezoning comp plan amendment would come before you all in the future, if they choose to pursue that.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I think there was one time some talk about making that a homeless transition housing facility, so that might be why it was--
Yeah.
Anything else?
And just to be clear, this parcel basically contains all of their buildings in that general area, right?
Other buildings on the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's all of that, except for that one little strip of green space that Mr. Perry was talking about, that we own. It's everything else.
And we got it from the county, the future--
Right.
--wastewater improvements.
Yeah. Yeah.
This, there we go. Yeah, there's a number of county facilities.
ADC and--
Okay. And one of the things I had said earlier, when you look at to the west, right now on the corner is a crematory. A little farther west is the Soto Barnes and that, and then turning above, Supply House and Turning Points. To the south is a lower-income neighborhood. To the east is Braden-- or to the north is Braden Village. And of course, due east is our water treatment plant, our wastewater treatment plant that will probably never change. So putting something residential next to that might not have ever happened or been something you'd want to do. This actually gives that neighborhood access to animal care, and as we know, especially in Braden Village, is some of the older folks to have an animal, they can't afford to care for. This may give them an opportunity to adopt and care for an animal that's right there at a cost that is affordable. So I think there's opportunity. I mean, this ultimately, you know, if it doesn't work, the county, I'm sure, will eventually change, but hopefully it'll work. So if we're all done, let's go to the public hearing. Are you ready? Any other questions? All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve an animal work-- a special permit for an animal resource center located at 401 Seventeenth Avenue West. Do we want me to read the whole thing? Parcel ID or form?
I think we can just move to approve Resolution 24-101.
That was the one I was looking for.
Resolution 24-101.
Second.
All right. We've had discussion. Start the vote in Ward-- let me double-check to make sure. Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item 7B is Affordable Housing Surplus Property Proposal Review, and this is also a public hearing.
City Administration, Mr. Perry?
Ms. Fortin.
Ms. Fortin. Okay. All right, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Corey Fortin, Policy Planning Procedures and Real Estate Administrator. As you may recall, as required by Florida Statute 163.380, Section 2, a public hearing was held on the proposal forwarded by CRA Director Jeff Burton for the city to reconvey parcels 519, Eighteenth Street East, and 520, Nineteenth Street East to the CRA to be used for single-family owner-occupied residential use. As you may recall, those parcels were formerly owned by the CRA, and they conveyed them to the city for $10 each back in 2009. At that hearing, City Council instructed Director Burton to bring this recommendation before the CRA Board, and if approved, to bring it back before City Council. At the CRA Board meeting held on November 21st, 2024, the recommendation for the city to reconvey the two properties back to the CRA in an amount not to exceed $10 per parcel was approved by the Board, and this recommendation is now before you for the City Council to consider. And as before, because it's for less than fair market value, it has to be a public hearing. it has to be a public hearing.
Any questions? Hearing none. I guess we'll go to the public hearing. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request the CRA to have 519 Eighteenth Street East and 520 Nineteenth Street East parcels conveyed back to the CRA to be used for workforce, single-family owner-occupied residential use.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard. Ms. Coker, the loudest. All right, and we've, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Okay, approved five to zero. Thank you. All right.
Item 7C is the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance 4050. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Bradenton Land Use Regulations, Chapter 2.0 Administration and Procedures, amending Section 2.1.3.1, Composition in Terms of TLPB Members to modify quorum requirements in Section 2.1.3.3, Functions, Powers, and Duties, to amend the functions and duties of the Tree and Land Preservation Board, amending Chapter 4.0 General Regulations and Duties, to amend the functions and duties of the Tree and Land Preservation Board, amending Chapter 4.0 General Regulations, Section 4.1.3.5 Sidewalks to modify right-of-way landscaping requirements and add a tree species matrix, providing for codification, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jamie Schindolf, again with the Planning Department, and I have been sworn. So this case before you comes by recommendation of the Tree and Land Preservation Board. And so they are looking to amend a couple sections of our land use regulations. The first one deals with the composition of the Tree and Land Preservation Board. Right now, I believe they need five members straight to have a majority, and that's been very difficult for them to, to get a quorum at every meeting. It's a volunteer board, and obviously, life, life happens. And so they're seeking to redefine the quorum as a simple majority of appointed members or five members being present to constitute a quorum. And then they also are seeking to broaden the categories for potential appointees to the board. There's additionally a, an amendment that was recommended by the Planning Commission, which will remove the power of the Tree and Land Preservation Board to delay the removal of a tree for up to 180 days. There was concern that that could come into conflict with state statutes regarding the timing of development and permitting and things like that. So this is what they're proposing as far as changing the composition of the board, adding in some more general groups of professionals, environmental professionals, foresters, and then also adding in three city residents, a maximum of three city residents that are interested in the tree board's purpose, and removing the specific, you know, two architect, landscape architects, one arborist, those specific numbers of each type of professional. As far as Chapter 4 goes, this deals with tree planting right-of-ways. Right now, I believe there are only four species that the city has that they can plant in a right-of-way. And so this is just adding some additional tree types, many additional tree types. But it would be up to the city to pick from that list. They could still do the four that they currently have, but just gives a little more flexibility and some recommendations just to encourage some of these different planting, best practices in, in tree maintenance and planting. But I do want to point out that it includes the statement, "The Director of Public Works may, at his or her discretion, approve additional species or prohibit planting under certain circumstances." So the power still lies with Public Works in determining what trees go in the right-of-ways. Current criteria for planting trees does remain in place, root barrier requirement, distance from utilities, and respect for site triangles, things like that. And that's what we have. I don't think we have a representative from tree board here, unfortunately. But I can try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah. Did you, didn't you say that they were removing the ability to hold up construction for 180 days?
Yes.
Okay. Is it still in here? Paragraph B, delay removal?
So it should read in Ordinance 4050, it should read, B should read, "Provide guidance to the PCD Director when requested regarding tree removal permits involving grand or notable trees."
What now? So I'm looking at the strike through and underline. Am I looking at the wrong one?
The actual ordinance.
No, I was looking at the strike through and underline. No, 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 no.
There may be an inconsistency.
Okay. So it's paragraph B. Oh, okay, I was looking at.
I apologize for that.
No, 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 that's good. So that has been taken out, though?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been modified to just say, provide guidance, but not delay 180 days.
I'll just make a comment as far as, and I've spent the last month going through, trying to find board members. And obviously, council members can give me board members for all the different boards that we do. But we just don't have the volunteers. And to be so specific, it was becoming more difficult to find people. And, you know, a lot of people are so busy in today's society, and, you know, not that they don't want to volunteer, they just don't have as much time. And we've gone back to almost the same people over and over and over again. And people want to take a little bit of a break. So getting that a little less specific, I think will make it easier to get people engaged and also maybe bring in some of the people that want to. But, because we've had people that want to volunteer, but they're not an arborist. They're not a architect and doing things. So that, I think, will make it easier to try to fill it up a little bit. And then also, I think, allowing some different trees. And I've said for years that, you know, we love our trees, but right now, you've got some trees on Main Street that have outgrown the area, and they're actually into the building. So, you know, I've asked a couple of the arborists that have been involved in that for years and let them tell us what we need to do. Because ultimately, those trees with the storms have gotten broken up. And, and so, you know, we don't want to lose our trees on Main Street, but we may lose them just by the timing of it. And so how can we fix that? And some of it might be, you know, this tree board getting together and saying, hey, try this, this, and this to prolong the life. But also, we've got to be planning for the next step. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but I'd like them to take a look. I, I know that one time I dealt with a property, and they had an arborist or tree people that came and basically prepared the oak trees for the hurricanes. They thinned them out and everything and kind of made them so that the winds would go through the limbs rather than pull them off. And I don't know if that's a program that we could try to encourage and encourage private ownership, private owners to do. Because, I mean, that's such a part of our identity, are those granddaddy oaks. And so many of them went this last time. And if there's a way to help encourage people to prepare them for the hurricane, just like we do everything else.
Well, I think that's an opportunity because some of the longtime, I won't say older, Mr. Allen, but longtime people from our community remember Manatee Avenue when the oak trees had to come down for them to widen and fix the Manatee Avenue way it was. You know, they were grand old oak trees, but we had to have the traffic flow. So really, planning better, ultimately knowing that a town is going to grow, and putting trees, different species, in the right place, that will, will do it. And again, we all love oak trees, and we all have them, but it's how you're doing it. So anyway, anything else? Yes, Ms. Coachman?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. To respond, they absolutely are looking to do a lot more education and outreach. That's one of the things they're really hoping to get into. And hopefully, now if you all vote and they can have a smaller quorum, they can move forward. And so I will absolutely bring out that as a suggestion for some of that outreach, because that's really interesting. And they haven't really discussed that, so.
All right, so we'll go to Ms. Coachman and Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you. I have some concern, though. I mean, so they're, they're not making it a requirement to have an arborist, someone that has the expertise to make.
So there's currently, hold on, let me get back to that.
Oh, was it one?
Currently, there's not, none of these are required.
Oh, yeah, so that, so you can just, somebody that likes the looks of trees could be on the board.
So that, that would fall under the, the maximum of three city residents. And that's why they, they did put a maximum on that one so that the board couldn't just be all city residents that don't have some sort of background. As it stands now, they don't have to strictly have two arc, two landscape architects, one arborist. It's still a mixture.
But.
I don't think the arborist seat is currently filled.
Not.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they don't have one right now.
To be the most vital one to me.
But a lot of times, a registered landscape architect is an arborist.
That can happen.
Okay.
So still people with the knowledge.
We do have a forester right now.
But that's going to be a harder position to fill. Believe me, it's, it's, ask Kelly. I think Kelly's still in here. She's on me every day about the list. It's all of the boards. And, you know, if people decide not to renew, it's hard to find new ones.
And some cities hire an arborist, have arborists on staff.
I mean.
So.
You know.
I will say that's always, always an option.
So having a board and you have the expertise to make those suggestions or comments.
Ms. Barnaby?
I just want to say thank you so much for expanding the recommendations of trees. Growing up here, we used to be surrounded by orange tree, orange, like orange groves with orange trees. And then the spring, or whenever they would bloom, it was beautiful and wonderful. And then we had a lot of those areas go into development. And people wanted shade trees. And so that's how we got a lot of the, the large oaks that were put in. Our air quality in March, when those are blooming with the pollen, and speaking for myself and another family member that's allergic to the oak pollen, I mean, I can count on getting sick every March because of the oak pollen. And I'm concerned, because remember how there used to be all of these large Dutch elm trees throughout the United States? And then there was Dutch elm disease? And, and we, I think it's important that we have a plethora of options for people to pick from when you're talking about putting trees in. And so I appreciate that expanded list very much.
I will let them know.
Anything else? Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, very quickly, because going back to Councilwoman Coker's comments, when I look at the ordinance, that language in subsection B is, is revised language, and it's not shown that way. It's not shown in strike through and underline. So we will need to make that change. But just, you are correct. The, that is a change to the current language.
Okay.
All right. We'll go to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 4050.
Move to approve ordinance as presented.
Forty fifty.
Forty fifty.
Forty fifty.
Second.
Mrs. Barnaby? Mr. Kramer? We've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yeah.
Four?
I was anticipating to.
Five, I heard a double yes. Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Item 7D is the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance 4051. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, vacating a platted 10-foot alley as shown on the plat of high school addition to Manatee, recorded in Book 2, Page 41 of the public records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located north of Fifth Avenue Drive East, south of Manatee Avenue East, west of Second Street East, and east of First Street East, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Singer?
Robin Singer, Planning Committee Development Director, presenting. I have been sworn, and credentials are on file. This concerns the vacation of an alley right-of-way. You may be familiar with this property as previously seeing it, both regarding comp plan amendments and rezoning, in order to allow for a car wash facility to be located, and this is kind of surrounding and behind the Starbucks that's located at First Street. And the alley runs to Second Street East. Presenting on this case is Mr. Galvano.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Good morning. Bill Galvano, Grimes Galvano. I'm here with William Clegg, his official bar name, but you know him as Bill Clegg from my office, and Abed Sowadee, who, along with Bill Clegg and I, have all been sworn. We're here on behalf of Op Partners, Inc. You all are very familiar with this property. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here this morning. It's been before you on a comprehensive plan amendment. It's been before you on a rezone. And we're here today on the vacation of an alleyway that is really no longer serving the public. It's, it's just not. And it's surrounded by the applicant's property.[1608.22] The property is necessary in order to comply with the requirements of the city, and we've been working very hard to do so. The public utilities that may have used it have either signed off with no objection. Florida Power and Light has asked for an easement, which we agreed to. And I have agreed to that, that stipulation. Staff will tell you it's consistent with your land development code. It's consistent with the future land use classification. And really, there should be, be no objection to it. We're here to answer questions. Otherwise, I, I would ask that you move it forward. Thank you so much.
Questions? Seeing none. Ms. Singer, anything else before we go to the public hearing?
Um, yeah, this has been revert, reviewed for the criteria regarding right-of-way vacations. Public Works Department has indicated no need, future need for the right-of-way in this particular case. Are we resolved any issues with dumpster access? FPL, as Mr. Galvano indicated, would like an easement replacement, but that will be between those parties. So staff is recommending that, you know, given the criteria, that City Council can approve this vacation. And the, I believe the Planning Commission also indicated their support for this request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we go to the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Regarding FPL, so we should include a stipulation that the easement is?
Well, this is an ordinance.
We do have a stipulation in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4051.
Move to approve.
With stipulations?
It's in the ordinance that we're approving.
So you don't have to say that?
No.
Just, just to make it clear, that Section Two of the ordinance says that the vacation is conditioned upon the applicant providing an easement in a form acceptable to Florida Power and Light to address their existing facilities.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Barnaby, a second.
Second.
By Ms. Coachman. We've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Item 7E is the first reading for ordinance 4055. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida repealing Chapter 30, Section 30-12 of the Code of Ordinances, relating to inspection of certifications and returns by the City Council in declaration of election results, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The second reading and public hearing are scheduled for January 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Item 7F is the first reading for ordinance 4056. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida amending Chapter 54, Article One, Section 54-12 of the city's Code of Ordinances, relating to unlawful lodging out of doors, revising definitions, amending procedures for relocation and enforcement, providing for enforcement mechanisms, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing are scheduled for January 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Item 7G has been asked to be moved after items 8F and G related to the PVA.
So to be removed, you said?
To be read after those items.
Okay.
Mr. Driscoll requested that.
Okay, so when will they be read?
After items 8F and G.
Oh, after 8F and G, okay. All right, so we'll read that afterwards. But right now, we're just going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be, it's 10:01, so let's be back at 10:10. Come off a recess, 10:10. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item 8A is the DeSoto Heritage Festival Grand Parade.
All right, and we'll have our presenter come forward and state your name.
Hello, I am Kelly Thomas. I am representing the Event Review Committee. We are bringing two applications for your review today. The reason we bring them forward to you as individual applications is because they do require FDOT approval. And they do, this is a requirement on their part. They will not accept anything on consent agenda. So that's why you're seeing these individually. The first one is for the DeSoto Grand Parade on April 26, 2025. The application is mirroring from what they did last year. So it does have the new and upgraded parade route. So we're going west down 64 now. But really, that was, there's no significant changes. And the Event Review Committee is recommending approval.
Oh.
Questions, Ms. Coker?
No, we are going west again?
Yes.
We're going back to?
The same way we went.
West is the new one.
Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah, okay.
Starting east and going.
Same parade route as last year. Same, same.
Are we starting at the same time?
The parade is going to step off at 6:30.
Or earlier. Think that some of the stuff that I know and was discussed is it was a great route. It worked better, but they learned probably 10 or 15 additional things to make it even better that, you know, just from the first time you learn things. And, and, and if you see, Manatee Avenue is almost totally repaved now. So there'll be no lips and all of that, and everything should work, flow a little smoother.
The barricades help a lot, too.
Yeah, oh, and the barricades, 100% of the route, really.
Just going to need more beads.
We're working on that.
Oh, my goodness.
And I tried so hard to ration.
All right, so any questions further on that? Or we just need a motion to approve that one? So to hear a motion to review 8A, the DeSoto Heritage Festival Grand Parade?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four. Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Here he's five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
For the second application, this is in conjunction with the parade, is their block party that they had. They had it last year. It is over on 12th Street West between Manatee and Sixth. They have beer tent, there's a stage there with some entertainment, Kid's Own, bounce house, basketball, food trucks. If you didn't have a chance to go buy it last year, I highly recommend you go buy it. Everyone had a great time. It's a great way to incorporate all the staging. People get to go in and have a little bit of fun before they start working the parade. So Event Review Committee recommends approval for that as well.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve 8B, block party.
Move to approve.
All right, Ms. Coachman, second by Ms. Coker. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Three.
Yes.
Two, three.
I was so excited. By the, by the way, the, the jacket I'm wearing is completely coincidental. Mine is, is for the holidays, theirs is because it's like a bodo.
This is a little more cranberry than the official DeSoto red.
Maybe a velvet suit in here.
Tomorrow at St. St.
Pardon me? Ole.
Thank you, and continued appreciation for what our DeSoto Heritage Foundation does to continue the positiveness in our community and especially what you do for children, to keep giving back. So thank you, and looking forward to another great parade. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Do we have a weather report yet for that?
Madam Clerk, moving forward. Madam Clerk.
Item 8C is vacation payout options.
Okay, who's going to talk about that?
Mr. Williams.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman, Mr. Rudersso. Lance Williams, Chief Operating Officer. So, you know, I like to include Scott. So just to kind of give you a, a quick background, because a little bit of history is in the presentation. In the last four years, we've actually paid out any vacation overages that our employees have over their default amount. And the default amount is, is dependent on their position. This year, we've, we've analyzed it again. I'm going to, I'll give you the presentation, kind of give you the numbers. We're going to ask council to decide on which of the options they would, they would prefer to go, with the intent is that to kind of get back to normal and utilizing, well, it's kind of right, whatever normal is these days. And utilizing what's already stated in the employee handbook as far as regards to vacation and how we manage it, so.
Normal is a setting on the dryer.
So a little bit of the history. So it's, this all started back in 2020 during COVID. Obviously, that changed our definition of normal. Mr. Callahan had, had come to City Council, kind of explaining that employees weren't really able to utilize their vacation. And so he had asked council at that time to, to pay out anything that was over, again, the default limit. That motion was approved five to zero. In years 21 and 22, we had, Mr. Perry at the time had, had essentially done the same thing, came to council and, and referenced our 2020 payout and had recommended a 50% buyback or payout option. So council approved, in 2021, a motion was approved four to zero. And then in, in 2022, the motion was approved five to zero. Last year, we had a vacation payout that was brought to council. Again, it was approved, but this buyback was actually 100% of anything that was over the default limit. So essentially, it reset all of our employees back to their default limit with the intent of employees would utilize their vacation throughout the year and manage it accordingly. So that motion was approved five to zero. So just to kind of give you a little quick idea of the handbook. So the handbook, when I say get back to what we classify as normal and utilizing what's already, already dictated in the handbook, you can see the highlighted areas and, and, and just kind of recap what it says. Basically says, for employees that have a default limit of 240 hours, anything in excess of that by December 31st is forfeited. 240 hours is quite a bit of time, as you can imagine. So we're asking employees to manage their time throughout the year. The next paragraph talks about department directors, managers, superintendents, and assistant superintendents. That level is a little bit higher. It's an S, in excess, their default limit is 280 hours. Anything in excess of their 280 hours is, again, forfeited by December 31st. Just kind of a quick note, department directors and assistant directors, their level is actually 300 hours. So again, anything over 300 hours by December 31st is forfeited per the employee handbook as it stands today. So just to kind of, you know, I'm kind of a numbers guy, so. So by the numbers, this shows what we've paid out and the number of employees that we've paid out. So first year was COVID, again, back in 2020, we paid out 107,000 for 73 employees. You can see over the years, 21, 22, obviously, that dropped off. Even the number of employees had, had decreased. 23, again, going last year, we had 46 employees. And then last year, just, again, we paid out 100% of the overage. And that was 95,000. So you can see from last year to this year, we now have 32 employees in addition, an increase of 32 employees that have overages on their vacation.
Of what date?
That was as of November.
Through November.
Through November, correct. Obviously, you know, vacation until we get through the entirety of the year is kind of a moving number. We don't know everybody that has vacation scheduled or wishes to have it approved at this point by their department director. But at the end of November, we had 78 employees at the tune of, again, if we paid out 100% of the overage, of about $130,000. So what I'm fearful of is it's becoming a little bit more of a habit than it was an exception, as indicated back in 2020. And through several discussions with Mr. Perry, myself, and the mayor, we kind of, we want to get, again, get back to what the handbook says and, and manage the vacation hours through the year. We want employees to take the vacation. We want them to enjoy their families, have time off, rest. They kind of need that reset to get back to, you know, come back refreshed and ready to go, so.
Do we have any idea how many people's vacations were impacted by the three major weather events that we had?
We don't, and we discussed that, but I know that, obviously, there were some. If you look at the timing of those events, it was, it was in September or August. So, and then the two in October. Usually, a lot of, the majority of your vacation is going to be taken already by that point. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of summer vacations happen. We see a spike in the increase of vacations happening over the summer for summer vacation. But I don't have the exact number of who actually was impacted during the storm that was taken into account. And that's kind of why I came up with some options, right? And for council to be able to decide on which direction they would like to go. So moving forward, city administration will be following the, the vacation policy currently established in the employee handbook. However, obviously, if, if something arises, the city administrator determines that there's adverse conditions that warrant vacation payout, we'll bring it to council, and, and again, council can approve it. But the expectation is we're going back to the handbook. Additionally, I've had several meetings with our payroll administrator and our administrative services director. And we're going to provide a quarterly vacation report to all department directors. What that'll do is it'll allow them to look at that vacation report and then look at the employees that are on there that are getting close to that overage, ensuring that they manage that throughout the year properly. And then, so again, the suggestion is going to be to approve one of the, the, I, I put on here four options. There's actually five, if you wanted to pay out the whole amount. But to, to pay, to approve one of the payout options with the understanding, moving forward, employees are expected to utilize their awarded vacation and that all directors will follow the current, currently established vacation policies provided in the handbook. Can't say it enough, we're going, the idea is to go back to the handbook. So here are the four options.
We'll get to that.
Hold your microphone, please.
A couple of things. You know, we, we studied a couple of different things in this to look at where trends were. And it was really spread out amongst the departments. It wasn't just the Police Department or the Fire Department or the Public Works. It was, it was pretty much spread out. And, and of course, it's going to be in longer-term employees that accrue. You know, they have higher accrued balances. Some of the, some of the concerns of the department directors are, well, we need to know sooner, and, and we received a couple of things from some of the directors about, in order to manage this. And so there's validity to that. If, if you're told as a director, manage your staff's vacation leave in December, that's really a tough thing to do because you only have, you know, a couple of pay periods, one month, basically, to manage it. So Lance had pointed out that we're going to give those quarterly reports. But we also saw anomalies where folks hadn't taken any vacation time. And, you know, really what it comes down to, this is a use it or lose it policy. Most everybody has one of these things in all local, state governments and the like. And so we don't want to punish the employee by, you know, having them lose it and forfeit something that they've earned. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we don't develop a bunch of unliquidated liability. Second to the unliquidated liability concern is, the more you do it, the more it becomes something that people are going to rely on. But maybe they should, maybe they shouldn't when it's discretionary. And also, they may basically make a bet. Well, they did it the last four years. Let me keep accruing. I won't take any vacation time and the like. And so you've got that kind of affecting it. Here, we did have the, the novel and, and anomaly as it relates to the storms. I mean, we required people to work throughout the storms, which was a better part of a probably 90-day period and the like. But we want to improve it next year and, and try to get away from that. The balances themselves are pretty consistent, what I've seen for state and, and other agencies as far as somewhere between 240 and 300 thereabouts. It's a pretty good period of time. Those vacation balances are payable when you leave or separate. Your sick leave isn't. It's a little bit different. Your sick leave handled differently whether you retire or you don't retire. But we're going to give you some options to try to deal with this year with the idea that next year, we're going to transparently let folks know we're, we're going to take a little bit tighter look at this thing. Don't be so sure about that we're going to implement it. Depends maybe what the situation is. If we have another storm season like this, maybe you would want to do it, right? If we don't, we are going to have, there are directors that have been given the information and expect them to manage it, because that's really what it comes down to.
Yep, perfect.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams, do you have, is there an option that you feel is more palatable and fairer than the others? Or you're just, you don't have a strong feeling about any of this?
I don't really have a strong feeling either way. I, I, I think, you know, going back to 2020, and when you read the minutes in that council meeting, Mr. Callahan had mentioned that this is a one-time exception. Four years later, or three years later, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of talking about it again. So, you know, if we, obviously, aren't, to Mr. Perry's point, to your question about this, you know, the impact on the, the recent storms, our, our crews and our employees did a phenomenal job. We're, we're way ahead of, you know, a lot of other municipalities. We service the citizens, quite frankly, to the highest that I could even imagine that we could do. And, and I was surprised in some cases that we were even able to pull some of it off. But I think if you look at these options and the fact that we're mid-December, I don't want to punish those employees either. But I want to send a clear message that going forward, the expectation is that it's managed and we go back to the handbook, not, well, you paid it out the last four years, maybe they'll do it again, and I'm going to take that bet. So if you, if the expectation is it's managed throughout the year, they have the opportunity to utilize that vacation. And then, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. We didn't see COVID coming. We didn't see the three storms coming. I mean, who knows what the future holds, but that's why we still have the option. If something comes out of left field and it really impacts our employees' ability to take vacation and to utilize that time, then the city administrator will come to council and say, hey, this is what happened. This is how it was impacted and why. And again, we're not trying to hurt our employees. We want them to utilize that time. But we want to take the expectation of, well, maybe they'll pay it out again next year out of the picture going forward. So the expectation is to, we're just going back to the handbook. So with that said, to answer your question, I would say option four is probably your most beneficial because what it does is it, it gives you an opportunity to pay out all of the overage of the vacation. And, and it doesn't penalize anybody. Nobody has to forfeit vacation at that point. You know, obviously, option one is if you do nothing, we go back to the handbook and, you know, you know, we could go that route, but is it the right thing to do for the employees? That's, that's why council makes those decisions.
Well, and, and option four is 40 hours, so that's basically one week. And then anything you have above that is paid out at 50%. So if you have another 100 hours, you're going to get 40 hours. So if you have another 100 hours, you're going to get 40 hours. I mean, excuse me, 50 hours.
Yeah, sure.
Right. But in, in anything between. And, you know, that was something that we discussed quite a bit. And, you know, Lance did a great job at coming up with the differences. And in reality, it could be less than the 108,000 because people have, are taking vacation now. And when you look at, it's 78 employees, give or take a few, unless they've used it to go down out of 650. Is that, would that be our number about 650? Yeah. So, you know, it is a, it's a higher percent from the years over, but it's lower. And, and one of the things looking at when there are several employees that have taken no vacation. And I don't think they were looking at it as a payout. Some people just don't like to take it. And, you know, and they've reached their maximum. So I think I agree with option four. Cause that gives the most maximum on these to the employee and basically says, we're going to manage it better if nothing unique happens.
Correct. Yep. Going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm comfortable with option four. With the directors being told they've got to start managing this a little better, get that information out. We, 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 we have some employees that have been with us 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. There's a lot of organizations and companies that can't say that. And I think that it is important to recognize that we did have some significant events occur that none of us up here could have controlled. So to be able to say to them, you know, please, please start taking your vacations. We don't want to have to do this, deal with this again, unless there are some sort of extenuating circumstances. We're going to go by our handbook. That's our, our procedures and policies that this, this city council and city councils before have approved. And that's kind of your city bible for all intents and purposes. So I'm comfortable with option four with the understanding and let the, let the word go forth that don't make that bet again, that we would, we would do it just because we've got employees that chose not to take their vacation.
Mr. Kramer, thank you. Can you go back to the by the numbers slide you had?
Yeah. Um, based on what Mr. Callahan said in 2020, it does look like it was working. I mean, that was a third of the people, um, roughly that were getting money dropped off. And then this year it went up higher. That grand total is by my numbers, a little bit over $20,000 if we just paid everybody in full estimated, right?
If we pay, if we paid the 78 that were at this point, well, it would be 100 and about 130,000.
Which the number you had on your final slide was 108,000.
That, yeah.
18.
So the number that you're seeing on the by the numbers is it, it's kind of in coordination with, with when we paid out the full in 2020 and in 23.
Right.
So what you're seeing at the 129,000, 130,000 is if we paid everybody out, everything from their overage without any ratio of two to one or 50%.
Right. I understand. I'm saying that's about $20,000 more than your two to one ratio.
Yeah.
So it's not a significant number. If we still have the same admonition-ish that Ms. Barnaby mentioned of department heads and all personnel, be aware, we're not doing this again. I mean, to be blunt, have you had any discussions with department heads on any of these options?
Just a couple. I've not presented the options to the department heads. It's really more of a council decision, but I've not brought it to any of the department heads.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, yes, ma'am, Ms.
I just wanted to, I was doing the same mental, uh, calculation. And, um, while I appreciate the effort to be fiscally prudent, I do feel like that amount is not significant enough to warrant, you know, perhaps not meeting our employees' expectations in a year that was challenging and that we asked them to really step up and, and do quite a bit for the city. As far as sticking to the handbook in future years, I feel like that is completely a managerial employer situation. And I trust that you and the department heads will make sure that that, um, happens and, you know, that you can effectuate that. But at this stage in this year, I don't think that that amount is significant enough to warrant perhaps not aligning with what they were, their expectation.
Missed Ms. Coker.
Yeah, that's, that's what concerns me is the expectation. And, um, I wish I had a better feeling that the 78 employees, because it, it does concern me that last year when we paid the 100% saying, okay, this is the last time. And then we get to this year, but you don't really have a good feeling of how many of those people, it's more because of the storms. I mean, do you, do you think it is really because of the forms, storms or is it?
Yeah, I think it's a, I, I don't have exact numbers. I mean, I didn't interview anybody or take that into account. But my assumption is, you know, we're, it's human behavior. We paid it out the last four years. Last year we paid 100%. The fact that people didn't take vacation at all, that's what, that was the one thing that was alarming.
Well, and that would be something easy probably to go back on because if somebody, these vacations have to be approved, if not weeks, months in advance, and the storms were only a week out. So I think that's there, but I don't disagree. If we're talking about 10 or 15 or 20,000, you still want to benefit people in that way. But, and I, and I think it could be less because I know of a lot of people that have taken vacations in December because they didn't know and they wanted us to make an executive decision. And I wasn't willing to make that executive decision without coming to this council. And our only council meeting was today. So, um, and administratively, they didn't want to make that through Mr. Perry's office. Because you're talking possibly of 125 to 130,000, which is a significant budget impact.
Sure.
You know, but is 110 to 125 significant? You know, I agree with that. So, um, but again, I also agree that management, we should do a better job. That, you know, a lot of things you think are going away, you know, because ultimately if it's by the handbook, it's zero.
Yeah. And, and again, I, even option four, I, I mean, I just, I want, and I want them to understand. You need to take your vacation for your mental health, for, so you're a better employee. And, and, and I remember having that discussion when Carl brought this up the first time. Um, but it, I mean, this year has been a year. So, um, I'll defer to what, what y'all think on option four, but I may not be as next time.
Kramer, do you have a motion?
I have a, I have a, I think Ms. Coachman has something to say, but then I will have a motion, yes.
Yeah, I want to put my two cents worth in. True, there may be some people that are using this like, oh gosh, I won't take any time off. I'm going to get a big fat check. Okay. But there are still other people that the situations aren't that. And yeah, the, the fact that they're anticipating that we're going to do what we've done years and years. Okay, that's fine. We do that. I, you know, I don't see any problem with that. We have had a really, really tough year. And not all people take their vacation time during peak. They do wait for, you know, but the point I'm trying to make is I'm guessing I'm looking for an option five and that's doing it the way we have done it with the understanding. And it sounds like we're clearly from this day forward going to say, hey, we got to stick to it. You know, I know you, you, you've had this, you know, opportunity for the last four years, uh, but you knew it had to end at some point. So I, I, I don't have a problem with an option five.
Let's listen to Mr. Kramer's motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Coachman, for giving an official title. I'd make a motion for option five, which would be a payout of all carryover hours for this year for all employees.
So clarify that, um, from the standpoint of over their a lot at default amount, which some would be 240, some would be 280 and some would be 300. So above those, those numbers.
And you're saying at a one to one ratio.
One to one ratio. If they have 10 hours, they get 10 hours.
According to your buyer, buyer number slide, which is up roughly 129,000, I would dare say it's going to be less. Because I know people are burning their time now because they're afraid they're going to lose it.
I will second it.
That would prove the point of what Mr. Williams is saying.
Understood, but this is also a different year where people may not have the money.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
You know, people don't have that money. Well, that's discussion. We'll do that.
I will second it with a friendly amendment. And this may, we may, it may not need to be part of the motion, but that when the money is given out, there is an explanation with it saying the council does not anticipate having to do this again. So that they get their information, but they, there's the, it, they can't say that, oh, my department director didn't tell me X, Y, or Z.
Like they said last year.
All right. So we have a motion and a second with an amendment for information in the
Oh, absolutely.
The, to all employees.
Well, I feel like we're going in a different direction than we were discussing, but, um, I, we had all that discussion and concern, and then now we're going with a different amendment. Okay.
Well, here's the, those were not amendments. Those were just.
Suggested options?
Discussions.
Here's a, as I see it, if I could.
Yeah.
My problem with sunshine law is we can't talk about this other than right here. So I can't come with Pam and have a compromise amendment to maybe bring to you all or really staff and have them sort of count votes or whatever. We can't do that until we're right here. So that's where maybe in past boards, past councils, you didn't get a chance to do that because there wasn't a lot of agreement. There was this side or that side. I think we're all in agreement of paying things out, maybe not all at this option five. But I think we need to make sure our employees who granted, maybe didn't have their, their time scheduled. But if they knew they had time, but didn't have money to put forward to a vacation, didn't want to take the vacation to just work on their house, other than the work they'd already done. And they couldn't take their kids somewhere or their family. It's, it's difficult at this time of year, especially not December, but holiday seasons to then say, hey, that money you thought that maybe you're getting to maybe give you a little bit of help to get out of this worst year we've probably collectively as a community ever had. We're not going to give that to you for $20,000 to the city. I can't stand by that. That's why I appreciate the compromise. Option five.
Except that it's that assumption. Why were they having that assumption if last year they were told we're going by the handbook, this is the rule. Why would they have that assumption that they could make extra money? Now, see, that's what I'm not getting a good feeling that the whole reason they went over is because of the storms. You're saying they didn't go because they didn't have the money.
Saying if you did a department and I know Mr. Perry did a good bit of it, and I don't want to become the subject of an interrogation here. But, because it's not fun. Um, we're talking about 32 people, 32 employees of the city. We're not talking about everybody.
We're not talking about 78?
Yeah, 38 from 46. We're talking about, that's, that's a jump in last year to this year. It's not everybody and their mother out there who said, we don't have 500 employees out of the 650 who are doing this. We're giving it to these 30 or 78 total, 32 more than last year with a notice to all employees. They can watch this on YouTube anytime they're going to want to, to say no more unless something really bad happens. I mean, I think we understand that because we're not soulless, heartless people up here.
Well.
I think, let's go, I, I think, you know, we can debate this forever, but miss Moore and then.
Yeah, and I won't belabor the point, but I mean, I think though to, to Councilwoman Coker's concern, I'm relying on leadership to take care of that. Um, I, I don't want to penalize, you know, it, let's say, yes, as January 1, 2024, they had an expectation that they could skip vacations and get a check at the end. That is perhaps the role of their supervisor to manage that expectation. And if it didn't happen that way and we find ourselves here, I just, I have to agree with Councilwoman Kramer that this is not the time or the year that I'm comfortable feeling like I'm going to, you know, nickel and dime them a little bit at this point. But I, I agree that we can't keep doing this every year because it's not the policy. It's not good budgeting. But again, I'm going to lean on administration down to, uh, you know, department heads, down to supervisors to manage employees' expectations about what they can expect at this time of year.
Okay. So we've had discussion and, um, we have a motion.
And a second.
To approve and a second. So we'll start the vote in Ward five.
For option five?
Well, for the 100% over the hours of events. Uh, one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Williams, I think it would be good to have, go out with every paycheck. Just a reminder, this is, this is the policy.
Yeah, we can, uh,
If I could just chime in on that, I'd actually like to have it in every paycheck. And I'd like to actually the exes on those, that letter probably coming from, um, budget would be to the department directors too. Because at the end of the day, whether it's public works, police, fire, administration, whoever it might be, it's up to those directors to, to do that. And it's up to their folks below that as far as subordinate supervisors to let them know. Because I would imagine that if you're talking about PD or you're talking about even administration, I don't approve everybody's, um, in, in my administration offices, um, I don't approve their leave slips. But, but people down below me do. And it's as much their responsibility under good management to do that as it is myself. Because at the end of the day, I'm the department director, so to speak. Chiefs, the police, the chiefs of the department directors. And there's a little bit of a, a gap there. I think if that's one of your priorities to do budget management, then that should be one of your priorities. They do it in, in an uncertainty. It's not their fault. They don't know if this is going to be there. So when employees ask them, whether it's the first line supervisor who's a sergeant from an officer to a sergeant, or whether it's, um, an accounting clerk to Heidi. They go, well, we don't know. And, and that, they don't know. The directors don't know. The managers don't know. But I think we got to send a signal that there's an inclination not to do this again, as pointed out by Counselor Barnaby. And that it's going to have to be managed by the supervisors within each department.
Yeah. Cause they won't see this meeting. They won't hear.
That's, that's.
They'll hear what their, the people in the room tell the other people that tell the other people that get down. And this will either be a rah rah or a boo hoo.
Well, again, I want people to enjoy.
Right. Yeah. The vacations are important. We, we see in England and other countries, they real, they force them to take it. You don't have a choice. You're going at this time. And sometimes it's hard.
They made Sheldon Cooper take it.
Yep. Yep. So all right. Moving forward, city administration, Mr. Perry.
Mayor, so a quick matter regarding the emergency procurements.
So I just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, as required by our procurement policy, uh, specific emergency procurements that I am authorized to, uh, approve, but need to be brought to your attention at the next council meeting. This is for basically everyone about, other than the police department. And this is from a time period from the last report I gave you at the last city council meeting to this particular meeting. And you can see a series of, I believe it's about seven different emergency, uh, purchases that had to be made. And these are specifically related to the, the storms and damage that is related to the storms. Most recently, and the largest one was one I did yesterday, which was a series of garage doors for different facilities within the city. And I think it was probably about four or five, um, facilities. I remember one I looked at and it was like, I think it was $22,000. And, and this is a series of, I said, like five or six of them. But they were operational, but not fully operational. And the more they got used, the more damage got observed. And we bought in contractors to look, garage door contractors in that case. And they said, well, you've got to replace it. And these are commercial garage doors. I was, I was a little bit taken back by the, the pricing of it. I have replaced my own garage doors and I never knew they were as expensive as some of these, but, but there was a series of buildings. I think it was about five or six buildings. And you can see from the other items that are on there, um, that these are going to be basically matters that needed to be, um, addressed fairly quickly. We got the forever lawn that we're all familiar with at some of our, um, our parks and, and recreational areas, um, particularly if you go by Rossi Park. The two areas, it's actually three. One of them really didn't sustain too much damage. Actually it's four. But, but, but a couple of them did. We've had to put a construction fence up to keep people out of those areas to stop it from being further. But, but, but a couple of them did. We've had to put a construction fence up to keep people out of those areas to stop it from being further damaged, um, as well as limit liability. So you have some repairs for the forever lawns, uh, tires, and uh, tree issues, debris cleanup, obviously, and um, pumps. And so that's the latest report, and there could be some more of this coming, frankly. Uh, we have just, on, on, on this subject, it's, it's somewhat related to the subject. We have been working really closely with Hagerty in putting together our FEMA reimbursement. And it, it's a really complicated subject that I, I think I covered a little bit of that in the workshop. But we're having pretty good success with, with really organizing things, putting them in the right format to meet FEMA reimbursement requirements and, and also the, 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 the subjects of those types of requirements, what I told you and advised about, items, uh, categories A through G. And it is a changing landscape with FEMA and their rules, but Hagerty has given us pretty good reports on what we've been able to get done. And we should be able to get either expedite work or, or other quicker reimbursement through some of these things. The debris is fairly straightforward. We use contractors and long as everything is in order and they weren't picking up private roads and things like that, other than the one time they were allowed to do it, then we expect to be reimbursed fairly quickly. They actually extended the deadline on that too, um, for category A. I think till January 22nd for us to get everything in. We're expecting somewhere in the order of about six to seven million dollars, I believe. I think the counties had about 100 million. It's a big, it's a big number though, obviously. Other types of work, which are category B protective measures, we can also do as expedited projects. Generally speaking, about 50% of that money should be available within six months to a year, uh, for reimbursement. Things that are called forced work labor, meaning we use our own people, are eligible for that, so a lot of the overtime that was paid out will be reimbursed in that category. And um, then there's permanent work thereafter, but it's a, not only, but handling the storm and the great work that, that our public safety agencies did, and our Public Works, and our planning, and everybody did, really, that type of great work, but the after recovery and reimbursement piece that's being done administratively. We're doing a really good job. We bought someone on at Public Works, um, David Lindsay, who's kind, he's an accounting background. He did all the capital programs for um, Lake, uh, Lakeland, Florida, their airport there. And it's a distribution center, so they have a lot of growth going at Lakeland Airport. And we brought him in initially to handle a lot of the kind of grants administration and, 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 and other types of things. But because of that accounting background and his understanding of capital assets and operations, he was perfect fit. So he's been the point at Public Works, and he was fairly new to the game, but he's been doing a really good job. Jeremy on the police side, you know, we were told that the PD and Fire got their stuff together because they've done it before, and they always do a good job with that. The Public Works was a little bit different because we don't do that much of it typically. We'll do one, you know, maybe one storm a year and everything. But uh, we were getting very good reports from Hagerty on, on what we're doing. We still got a lot of work to do.
So do you need a motion for this, or just?
No, it's just advisement. I'm required to.
Yep, just, it's information, so, yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to hear that David is working out. I'm, I'm sorry, what was his last name?
I'm sorry?
What was his last name?
Lindsay.
Lindsay. Um, I'm happy to hear that Mr. Lindsay is doing a good job in that regard. When do you think he's going to wrap up the FEMA part so that we can move to the grant writing and administration?
Probably about three years from now.
That's not crazy.
I, I, I know, I don't mean to be a wise guy about that, but the FEMA recovery effort is an ongoing thing where that permanent work, quite honestly, and when I say permanent work, things like structure repair and, and the like, those categories, what is it, C through G, uh, which is going to be categorized mostly as permanent work. We'll, we'll be working on that for a while. That's not going to take the vast majority of his time.
Okay.
But, but, you know, when you say grant writing, and I know people have different ideas about that, and we are going to use them to organize better our money getting efforts from grants, from direct appropriations from the federal government and the like. It isn't just the, the, the money getting effort, but it's the reporting on the money effort. So when we get those grants, like you, we, we put on there today from DEP, we get inundated with, with notices saying, in order to get your money, you need to give us this report or that report. And that typically goes down from Public Works perspective to subordinates, just like it probably does at PD, you know, where lieutenants would start doing that kind of reporting. But it would typically go over to, at Public Works, um, uh, the engineering section. And so it puts more of a tax on Kim, people like Kim Clayback and those folks, and so they're not doing as much engineering as they are doing grant administration. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do. Another component of that is I get inundated, and the mayor does too, and I'm sure some counselors do, by some of our vendors that are doing large scale projects and the hundreds and thousands of millions of dollars, and they haven't been paid. And in order to get paid, we have to get all of the required work as as-built design, you know, plans, closeouts, all of this stuff. Again, where does that go? Engineering. That typically shouldn't, is not an engineering function. I don't think they teach you in engineering school how to do that. I think they teach you theoretical engineering, like I understand. But that's the way it was set up, and you all didn't do it that way, and I didn't do it that way, but that's what we're trying to fix. So going back to your point about Mr. Lindsay, we might need Mr. Lindsay and his brother, if he has one, depending on how we're able to divide that labor. Mr. Lindsay's going to provide a function of financial support to Public Works that will involve three or four major initiatives that I kind of outlined.
And it'll allow the engineers to do their job.
That ultimately, that's
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, and I, I appreciate that completely, um, which is why I think very strongly that we need someone who has the time to dedicate to that, whether it's a new hire or in addition to Mr. Lindsay's role. The, the roundabouts are a perfect example, and I, and of my concern and why I think that this should be a focus, the roundabouts that were vetoed, uh, the feedback that I got was that the governor felt like there was a pot of money that was funded already that would have been available for municipalities for projects like the roundabout that was vetoed. And I don't totally disagree with that rationale. I think that that's probably a reasonable thing for the governor to think. So I just think that we're, you know, just like anything, uh, diversifying our efforts, I think that, um, that's just one of the things that I think we, you know, low lying fruit, we, we are leaving money on the table by not being, by not having the bandwidth to be able to go after some of that. And I appreciate that it's super hard and the reporting, and I don't want the engineering department to have to deal with that. But I do think it, uh, I mean, and this is off topic a little bit, but I think that a dedicated person to go after and administer the grants would not be a horrible idea.
But you blended the words, go after and administer the grants, and you also said the point about we're leaving money on the table. I'm not so sure if we got a lot more money that we would be able to handle it, unless you get the administration side of that. That's what I was pointing out with Mr. Lindsay's function and the like. And I understand and agree with you, um, Counselor, more about, about having those resources too. But when you look at going after grants, we have lobbyists that go after grants. This Hagerty firm that we've been dealing with, they actually do a lot of that work. We've talked to some other folks, both um, in certain areas like applied science that's doing the engineering on um, City Park, the utility engineering. There's a lot of things that engineering firms actually know about that's funds that are out there. We were looking at funding for the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a lot of ways to go after money, and you need that to get the money, but then you need the infrastructure to support getting the money, to build the projects, to administer the grants and things like that.
And I think that's one thing that I don't know, that we need a, we probably need a consultant that we can hire to help us get them, help us manage through that grant, and then they're gone.
Right.
Because
That's a fixed cost.
That's a fixed cost in that grant, and then they make sure it administered. And I'll, I'll kind of play devil's advocate with you about the $5 million. No, we asked for the $5 million for the roundabouts because we could get it today and build them, because we were shovel ready. What we didn't realize that the pool of money was what FDOT had in the state. And if you looked, there was tens of millions of dollars that people went after, and the county was a lot more than us here that got vetoed because DOT was saying, wait a minute. If they get $4 billion and we start to pick off their money, their money's going to go down, and we're going to get it. But if you go through the proper process, you're looking at five to seven years through the MPO for Manatee, Sarasota County. So, you know, we learned a little bit from that, so, you know, we were matching a million dollars. And again, the governor did have his billion dollars he was going to cut to, to balance the budget. So I think that when you looked at that, he's going to listen to his DOT director on not taking their money away instead of municipalities. And we, we realized that, and with our, with our lobbyist and others and some other things, we're figuring out ways to angle it. But, you know, it's in the MPO parts of things, but let's look to five to seven years. Sidewalks to schools is that Manatee started that, um, in 2014 when I was on it. So they finally got done about two years ago. So it took eight years to get it done. That's what I don't like, but that's the, the world we live in.
It's complicated. I don't disagree with what you said. I, and I appreciate what you said, I really do. It's just that, you know, these kinds of things, even, and I want to blab the point, I know we're short on time. The, the pipelining project, they said, well, you can go to DEP and get grants for that, which we had before. But, but sure, we can, and we had before, and we'll do again. But we could have gotten it directly as a house appropriation, as, as a direct appropriation, like we did for the two years previously. Some of the stuff that comes out of the state Capitol and the executive side of government at state level
I think we want both. I think my point is that we want both. We want the appropriations. I support having the lobbyists. But lobbyist is not going to write the grants and administer the grants and do all the reporting. Um, so I feel like we just need both.
I agree with that.
I know we don't, I know it's a hard ask.
You know, lobbyists can do grants and other types of financing that we get. As I say, the house, you know, the direct appropriation, they can
Yeah, I think, maybe you guys can talk more offline about that too, so. So we can get this done. Mr. Perry, you're up again, I believe. Yeah.
I took up all my time.
On the art, Avenue of the Arts?
Yes, so Counselor may remember that we had had a workshop, um, previously for the Avenue of the Arts transfer of a lease to a full conveyance to developers. And we've basically reduced that to some documents that would be necessary, transactional documents to do that. We've sent them over to Legal and, and, um, Blaylock Walters has looked at those. And we're in the, prepared now to try to ask for approval. And I think Scott may have specifics as to what we would request as far as a motion for language, which would allow the mayor to approve that. You want to comment at all on that?
Yeah, um, I, so I don't think we actually have final documents at this point. We have the concept of, of what we want to do. And in fact, we just got, we just got some notes yesterday about, um, how that, remember the payment's going to be split up into two pieces with the, um, with the second payment being secured by a lien. We've looked at a different piece of property to put that on that, that wouldn't have to be subordinate to construction financing, so. What I would ask, assuming that the council is okay with the concept of what we discussed and wants to move it forward today, that the council would approve that, authorize the mayor to execute the documents once they've been reviewed by Legal.
Questions? Yes.
So they're going to secure their obligation with a different piece of property?
Correct.
Have you identified that property?
I think the answer is yes. I don't have it in front of me, because like I said, we just got the, a note on that yesterday, and the, they may be able to clarify that. Because it looks like they're in the audience here. So yes, it's, it's another piece of property, one that they're not obtaining construction financing on, so it would be, the city would have a first mortgage on that piece.
Is it, is it safe to say the value is there for the note?
I, we'll let them, uh, address that.
Good morning.
Morning. Happy holidays. Ron Allen, um, I'm working with Bob Hatfield, who is the developer of this project, and, uh, and again, appreciate the time on the workshop last week. Yeah, um, to make it simpler and, and probably more conducive to a typical real estate deal, the project that we're talking about on the Braden Riverfront has two phases. The first phase is what we'll, we'll be starting here, hopefully in February. The second phase is a, is a, is a second vacant piece of property on the Braden waterfront that has, um, approval for, or had preliminary approval for 100 units already. So if you do the simple math, that comes out to somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million of a value. I don't have that as an appraisal, but that's a sort of a standard for a land cost. So it's actually a piece of property that is part of this conveyance, but it's the second phase, so it doesn't get encumbered into the first phase construction financing, which, um, Scott mentioned would have caused, um, the city to have to subordinate that to the construction loan where this, it won't have to be, it'll be a, a primary mortgage in first position.
May I clarify?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, it is adjacent to the parcel, and your estimate is it's valued at about 3 million?
Yeah, if you just do simple math of 100 to 110 units at 30,000, a, a dirt unit.
But it is currently vacant.
Yeah, it's actually, if you, if you're familiar with the piece, and I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring anything to show you. It's the piece that sits between Riverdance's parking garage and the, um, new art center that's being constructed. If you happen to drive by there, uh, NDC's construction trailer is there for the art center, but it's that piece of, of vacant property.
I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just wanting to make sure I get the, I get the potential for the value of 3 million with 100 units, but if it's vacant currently, you know, God forbid that we have to foreclose on the, on lien. I want to make sure the value is there, basically.
Right, uh, yeah, and like I said, I, I don't know, the, I didn't know the particular property or the value involved, that's why I brought them up. But it would be securing the note, which is 550,000.
I think that, I mean, we don't have an appraisal, but of that specific?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to address that?
Yeah.
Take your name.
Robert Hatfield. Yes, we had an appraisal done, uh, for the phase one, and they valued the property at $30,000 per unit. So the, the piece underneath this building is approved for 100 units. We'll probably build a little less, but it's, uh, at 30,000, it's probably worth $3 million. We could sell it for $3 million.
Today.
Today. It's all utilities, all your intentions in, your lift stations in. It's, it has a certain value to it.
Questions? Other questions?
What's, what's the size of that strip? How much land is that?
Any estimation?
It's not
About an acre and a half. You know, if you think, I think if you think about it, you can see the rendering up there. That'd be pretty valuable, real estate, as far as, um, security and recourse from the city on their $500,000 note. Considering that each condo is well worth over that in the Riverdance building now. We may have a huge windfall if we were able to get that as
I know some adjacent property that would buy it for twice what that is right now.
I, I would think so.
It's not To keep it as green space.
Can you point to it again on there? I'm sorry.
It's this building.
Oh, that piece.
Underneath that building. Right.
Okay.
This is the building that's contemplated right now. And, and this would be a phase two, is what's depicted there. But I wanted to kind of explain the, the, the motion itself, which is, we have a series of things we have to do legally. And that is, we have to terminate the ground lease that's currently in place. And so this is the ground lease termination agreement. Generally speaking, we've looked at this, both Legal, myself, Corey, and, and, and Counsel, and principals for, um, Mr. Hatfield's group. And the, the, it looks pretty good, but there could be a nuance or two that needs to be changed in there. So you got to terminate the ground lease. That's one document. There's the memorandum of the ground lease itself that needs to be filed as well. There's another, a couple of documents that deal with, and these were all And these were all given to you last night. Unfortunately, we it took us time to get the the appropriate documents together. If you remember, we had our workshop, I believe it was last Wednesday. And we've been working on these series of documents. These are the warranty deeds that would effectuate the conveyance to Manatee Players Group. And there's also one for that that actually is and this this is the ones for the Art Center. And then we have one, obviously, that contains from the current leaseholder, INFI, to Manatee Players, to the Art Center, both their principals are here with Carla and Janine. And also an implementation agreement for clarification, which basically what this document does is it requires that the common area be equally divided for responsibility. Currently, right now, the two entities being River Song and River Dance are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those common areas. Say common areas, you're talking about roadways, sidewalks, inside where the water retention area is, the water retention area itself. This this makes it equally one-third, one-third, one-third. And that was a concern, so that it's equally divided. We know that those three entities might be better suited to keep up that 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 area that's adjacent to our area being on the Riverwalk and and the roadways, the public roadways and the like. So we we think that basically helps us considerably with those those issues. The last document was a resolution that I'm not that addresses the administrative approval of the existing submittal to the city for the proposal that had been done previously by Catalyst. We talked about that last week extensively as well. And they, when I say they, Mr. Hatfield's group has submitted a a revised proposal that is substantially similar to that which was reviewed. Again, we talked about that last week. The density of number of units is less, the parking requirements is less. However, there are technical things that basically the planning department will probably ask to come back to council. But the developers don't want to start all the way back from square one since there was an indication to approve this type of project as proposed previously. And I can understand that. And their lenders don't either. So what we're asking for is the ability to take these necessary transaction documents and have the mayor execute them.
And and so I think probably the the sentiment is, why are we doing this this way and timing wise? And we heard at our workshop from the Manatee Performing Arts, the Art Center, that there's some documents they need to get to do projects that they're doing that if they don't have a deed per se, they can't do it. There's some loans and different things that, you know, if if it was a project that we said it just doesn't work there, then yeah, let's deny it and move on. But we know that these projects work there. And so it's a matter of saying, timing is everything in the economy and where things are and loans and donations. And that was the reason that they brought it forward at the workshop. So I think that unless there's some sort of legal or technical thing doing it this way, is there anything that's illegal or unethical that we're doing this?
Well, no, but I want to I do want to split the two, I mean, two two different issues here. One is the the conveyances and the termination of the deed and the documents related to conveying the the parcels to the to the lessee and to the Art Center. And I I think we're we're in agreement in the concept on that. And so, yes, I think that that's the part where if if the council was comfortable moving forward with that, we'd just ask that it give us an opportunity to fully vet those documents and then that the mayor would be authorized to sign. I want to note, the one agreement that is in there does not include the city. So that is not part of this approval. We're not going to be part of that of that document. I think this is separate from the discussion about the amendment to the site plan. And so I I think we ought to bifurcate that discussion and let's focus on the first piece and then we can then we can get to the get to the other.
Ms. Coker.
Yeah, okay. Conceptually, I'm all in favor of getting things moving over there. To kind of say, I say this all the time to people, don't you can't try to time the real estate market. You just have got to put out a good product in a good location and and, you know, I just don't think you can time the market. Two of my biggest things that I don't know if this this legally is way outside my my expertise. But I I want to make sure that, number one, we're because the way I'm understanding this, we are conveying them the property. They will own it. And I want to make sure that, timing wise, that the project is committed to in a certain amount of time, reasonable. And I also want to make sure that that we're going to get a mixed use project. We've got a history here with the projects there. And I know that it adds a little bit more to have to have it mixed use. But I know that we've had a long time desire and have expressed it that we want a mixed use project down there that includes retail, commercial, whatever, on the first floor. And for whatever reasons along the way, it's been negotiated out. And I think it's time for us to start really pushing for that mixed use. And so I don't know that this is covered in any of this, and it sounds like it's not. And I just don't want to be, again, where we were before negotiating it out because I think that's important, that we get that mixed use in there. But that being said, conceptually, I'm anxious to get this going. I just want to make sure it's gonna happen and happen the way we've we've been asking for it to happen for a long time. So that's that's the main thing, because I feel like this is a real catalytic, you know, project that's gonna really help us get going. I mean, we've got a few of them that are all in planning stages. And once one gets started, I think it could go a long way. So I don't know how it needs to be done legally or discussed, bifurcated, whatever. I just that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. And and so if this were executed, they were the lease were terminated, at that point, they would only be subject to whatever the zoning and their approved site plan.
And then, oh, and one other thing, the way it's going where we're kind of giving it to them and then they're donating it to the theater. The only thing is, I really do want to see Bradenton's name somewhere in all that. I mean, naming rights. I mean, we we are a big part of it. And I it I it does concern me that Bradenton is nowhere named.
Perhaps you could have Mr. Both Ms. Singer talk a little bit about the process as relates to what would come back to council. And and then have perhaps Mr. Allen talk a little bit about the quote mixed use issue and what was there previously under the Catalyst and and what might be acceptable now. I I think it's difficult when we're in a situation to say to developers all the time, well, we we don't oppose you developing the property, but you want it. We want you to develop it our way. And and I think generally speaking, developers go, we want to develop it the way the market calls for. And there's proof of compromise in there. There is absolutely some requirements that are willing to go. But if you said something like, I want you to make it all, I don't know, a Target store, market, they might come up, I don't do that for a living. I don't do commercial development like so. Maybe if if Mr. Allen and and Mr. Hatfield can address that. And then we have Robin address the issues regarding continuing types of matters regarding land use and and approvals for this project. And then let Ms. Ruda South kind of go pine in there about where we're at.
Okay. Did we want Ms. Singer to say something first and then go to the applicant?
Singer, Planning Community Development Director. Yeah, back in 2022, we went through some changes to the PDP. And and when we're talking about the PDP, it's really your zoning designation. It's the maximums or the outside parameters of what you can do there. And what was shown as part of that is a plan that included, you know, some retail square footage on a residential building and some parking underneath the building and a liner building behind the Art Center. And I think a large part of what we were trying to accomplish there also was to describe the Art Center's property because they were going through their redevelopment process. And it really wasn't as clearly defined in there. We've talked about the possibility of an amendment to the PDP. We just don't know if that is going to be a major or a minor amendment because we haven't really sat down with the developer and seen everything that it is that they want to do in in the amount of detail that we would need to make that determination. It is possible, though, they can develop potentially and it be a discussion with the city attorney on what is required versus what is allowed. And whether or not retail is really allowed in the current PDP as opposed to required versus, did I say required versus allowed? So that's really, we need to see what it is they want to do. We need to compare that to the PDP. And then we need to go through the PDP in more detail. We didn't really have a resolution until 2022. We had some findings of fact from past approvals. So we really kind of built this with the stipulations that had previously been approved. And they had reduced the retail square footage, for example, from 30,000 square feet approximately to about approximately 9100 square feet. Increased the residential units from 456 to 584. That was all within the comprehensive plans allowances. So they could potentially modify within those parameters.
Both properties.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the whole project originally. This is a portion, Phase One.
Yes.
So I just wanted to to kind of go on one thing. And I I don't disagree that, you know, we have always, and I have always been for kind of making them put in retail in different places. And recent experience in in Riverdance, there's, I think, three or four retail spaces underneath the parking garage that being now living there and understanding some of it, we have to give that away, the retail space. The person that's in there and another person finally rented it. But basically, over a three to four year period, we're giving them like, out of the 48 months, we're giving them like 30 of the months for free just to get them to give us a little bit in that because retail just doesn't work there as much yet. Now, we're hoping it works with the Art Center and with the others, but I don't know. And I don't know what their plan is. I know what we proved. But I hope that, you know, we want the retail. We want a grocery store. We want people down there that are going to be able to walk to these activities, a coffee shop. And that's how Catalyst sold it to us. So, you know, and that's but we also want a business to succeed. All right. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna try to condense these into a couple of points. But this is a a a subject that that takes a lot of discussion. While we always, community people and these community leaders would love to see thousands and thousands square feet of of retail in our downtown. We have a couple of things happening. I can tell you firsthand on the two retail locations that are being constructed right now, which is the 920 project and the Affordable Housing Project that's on Manatee heading east eastbound. Those retail centers are not being gobbled up by retail users. We are fortunate. We have one or half of our commercial space, and we only have 5,000 square feet in 920 that we have under leased now. So and we've been trying to lease for a year and a half. The Affordable Housing Project on the on the other corner of Manatee Avenue is struggling also. We are marketing that to the national community. The the problem is that in government, in their trying to make their best step forward of trying to get mixed used into a project creates a lot of problems for the market and the developer. A couple of things happened. One is the retail market just isn't out there in masses for emerging downtowns. Now, if you go to St. Pete or you go to Tampa or you go to Sarasota, they have a history of building that up to where they are. Bradenton, we're sort of in that in sort of that infant stage of the retail, which makes it extremely difficult to attract mass amounts of retail users. Having said that, the project we're, you know, embarking on here on the City Hall site has about 37,000 square feet of retail. We believe that that's going to be a different story because there's enough retail in one area that's going to allow us to build that momentum of getting retail here. When we start trying to do these one offs in other locations, I think that's going to create more of an issue. And if you then if you go to the developer's side, it is really hard to get mixed projects financed today because they won't give you any credit for any revenue associated with that that mixed use or that commercial area. So you now you're having to underwrite your loan based on only those residential units. But you're having to build this these buildings downstairs on the first floor. We would love to do that. Here here's where I think in this particular instance is where we're gonna compromise. We want to compromise for that is both the Art Center and the Manatee Performing Arts Center are planning projects. Art Center is ahead because they're actually building. But the Manatee Performing Arts Center is planning a new building on that dedicated land, and we're in the middle of that process. We've been working with them and talking with them, and we think that there's an opportunity for them to bring a retail component in, a beverage kind of, a coffee shop kind of arena, which is a nice piece for that, for both the Art Center, for the apartments and everything that's on the on the Bradenton Riverfront and the Performing Arts Center. We are working hard to try to make that work. But we would ask that you don't tie us up. I completely understand what you're saying. But I think it puts a burden on the process and the and the ability for the success of the process when you start tying things that may not be necessarily market conditions on that project. And that's sort of been our struggle.
So I have a question and and being involved with as a councilman, 920 approval and then HTG and some of the projects that started out and then kind of in this position. Government was very heavily involved financially, whether it was through money through the CRA, whether it was through money through impact fees in both of those projects, the one on Sixth Avenue and Ninth and then there. One of those HTG, and I don't want you to speak for them, but I think you can speak in general. Government on our board kind of forced you to put in retail, which you've said that before that wouldn't. But we were giving you money for that. So we and and then the project here on this property with the development agreement to buy the property to the to the L and L, we forced them to put in retail. I want it more retail. But it is a retail that you think you can sell or they think they can sell. If government's not giving you money, it doesn't seem like the development world wants to put in retail in certain areas. I mean, there's going to be pockets. And as we get bigger, as you said, other cities. So, you know, every project that we've done that government's been involved and had to go back to another government to get money to be sustainable, that we worked with that government to say, please give it to them because we want these projects, seems like the retail's struggling. And I I don't like that, but I want to know.
Yeah, I mean, I love downtown and I love the retail we have downtown. But even if you look at your own venture in the parking garage, it it's a wonderful venue. If you go there, it's lovely and everything and and people shop. But I will venture to say that's probably not a profit center for the city of Bradenton. And that's just because that's the cost of what it it takes to build the facilities and the rental rates you can get when you can attract those tenants is is little bit on the opposite sides right now. And it just makes it. And the last thing we want to do, or at least from a developer And it just makes it, and the last thing we want to do, or at least from a developer perspective, I don't want blank units in, in front of my apartment complex or whatever, building, office, whatever. You know, we were fortunate in our, in our NDC center to have Jimmy John's in there, but Jimmy John's went out. You know, now we have a financial advisor in there because there was not another retailer. Putting that retail in that location, we'd rather work with the nonprofits on either side of us to try to enhance what you're describing because nothing would make us happier for that to be successful. But we've got to look at what is the market today and whether we have the ability to be successful. And I think we're more successful working with the nonprofits on either side of us than we are trying to shove that, that little bit of retail in the midst of this building.
So are you saying you're getting rid of the retail now?
No, I'm saying is what we're trying to do is we're trying to work within the system that the project works and that's what we're going to say with, with Planning Department and go through that process of what that looks like. I just want you to understand.
And I do appreciate.
The realities of our economics of.
But our plan all along is to make downtown livable, live, work and play and stay here. And I'm afraid if we just keep doing residential, 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 it's going to become a bedroom community and we're just going to be housing the people that are going to go to Sarasota or go to St. Pete. And so I want to make sure that we have some, you know, and I get it. You've got a, you've got the realities of the finance world and, and, but, and part of it's a little bit of a, if you build it, they'll come, you know, mentality, but we had a, we had a.
With us building it yet.
Well, we haven't built it.
Well, we have 920 and River.
Well, okay, but the people aren't living there. I just think we're on the cusp and I don't want to abandon.
Been on that the whole time of bringing, but I think location, location, location. And this might not be the right location unless it's worked in with the, I like the art center and the performing arts.
We keep abandoning it. That's all I'm saying and I'm not ready to throw it out.
I think you made a major commitment with this project here.
Absolutely.
And this project is what I'll call the game changer of the bits and pieces of retail. You know, when this project is up and operating the way we perceive it, that's going to allow some of those other little retail things you described to be a much more effective of being able to accomplish than being the first in. Does that make sense, unfortunately?
Yeah.
But if you, if, just like with, when we removed the 25% affordable housing here, after 20 years, nobody even was interested in doing that. If we didn't remove some of that, we were never going to get development downtown. So I agree with you 100% on some of the things, but sometimes you have to do other things to get other things to bring other things long-term. And downtown, the sand pile has been a 60-plus year. I don't want to say.
And we have, and we have given up on it before. River Song, we gave it up and then the piece now that's going there, we gave it up.
Blank slate out of business. You know, again, if there, if everything, and again, location is everything.
And I agree. I think this is going to be catalytic and I think after that, are we going to be going, oh, I wish we hadn't have given it up.
But then you don't get a project because it's not viable. And I'm not fighting for this project. I'm just saying in general, I've looked at overall how things are, so.
Yeah, and I think also the concept of live, work is much more, much more in everybody's world now. If you had said 15 years ago, live, work, that was for artists and, but now there's a whole group that live, work, which meets the criteria in, in the, in the approvals for those kind of things. And I think in this location, given what else is happening, I would, we would really not want to be tied into providing something that we don't know if economically will even work. So that's, that's sort of, not that we won't try, not that we won't work with our, like I said, our nonprofit neighbors in trying to come up with the idea of what you're trying to describe for people to walk to and do those things. I just, we would be, we would be hurting the process right now if that was a requirement because it would sort of be, you know, it would be the dog chasing the car. And I don't know that that's a, that, that's good for us as a downtown either.
And there's no financial government involvement in your project.
No, you guys took it out of the CRA, so I can't, we can't go to Jeff Burton and try to get him to help. And that's sort of a joke. I didn't mean that disrespectfully.
Well, part of, part of why I agreed to the deal that we did in the CRA with the Art Center was because I was so impressed by what catalytic and I felt like that I could justify the income that, that would come from that, you know. Anyhow, it's just now things are changing again. Now, you know, here we are changing it again. And so you make decisions based on one set of things and, and so that's all, I'm just voicing my.
All right, nope, good, good conversation. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore.
I agree with you. I think it's not any news that my position is always, we do always give it up, I think. I mean, historically speaking, I feel like we, we don't stick to what our, our initial goal was. I also think that it is in danger of becoming a bedroom community. And if you're going to struggle to have the retail component, I'm a little concerned about putting that burden on the nonprofits to bring it because if you're going to struggle with it, I don't see how they're going to be able to sustain.
Yeah, I wouldn't have made that comment if I didn't think there was something in the works that was positive.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Well, again, I think location is very important and I've always been, and Mr. Allen knows that I've pushed for that the whole time I've been here and, but looking now at what's happened and understanding it a little bit more and looking at Riverdance, looking, if, if we had, if we would have made River Song put in the retail product that is failing at Riverdance and I, you know, not being there before, I didn't know it, but now sitting in those board meetings and listening that it's, we're, we're paying them to be there. And I don't understand that because we thought, we thought if we paid them as a board, that then it would come back to us. And it's not. I don't know how to say that in that location today. And when you look at what's happening, you know, for the future, maybe 10 years from now, maybe 15 years from now, it will be saying, hey, we should have done it, but the project's not there and it's an empty field still. I don't want empty fields anymore. I want development to be bringing people. And if it's a bedroom community that has a great Main Street and a Baccarat Boulevard because of the Art Center, Avenue of the Arts with the Bishop, the, I mean, the Bishop is off the chart having events now. Just ask Riverdance and River Song with the Noise every Friday and Saturday night now that is allowable by our codes and ordinances because they're having the events, they're having the thing. So Janine, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Janine Amick for the Record, CEO, Florida Cultural Group, would do business as Manatee Performing Art Center. A couple of things. So first, in regards to the retail. And so coming out of COVID and then going through the two storms that we did, our board has been very strategically focused on a lot of research. And you all know, because you've all been in and out of our building, you know that we're a little unique because we are trying to transform the physical facility of Manatee Performing Art Center to gather people. We have officially already been in talks with another group to come in. It's another nonprofit, okay? We want a coffee shop to operate seven mornings a week at least, okay? Right out of our concession area. We believe that bookending the Art Center with their great, and don't forget the holidays, I'll put a plug in for her, you can get great Christmas gifts, okay? But from that perspective and then us on the other end, we have people who come in and now use the lobby even before Kwanis for other meetings. We want to generate more foot traffic. We believe by having the people in 808, the apartments behind us and now this new one, that is going to provide us people who just want to come, use free Wi-Fi and have a cup of coffee who don't necessarily want to walk all the way up from our, even from Aria going across the street. So that is in our plan. We were hoping to piggyback off of the new building for, so I want to make sure everybody knows the coffee shop and what we're looking at is in the current Performing Art Center because we have plans of increasing the concession area, partnering with Cisco in providing new coffee makers and things like that. So this is a very real deal for us, but we've been kind of putting it on hold to see what else is going on because we don't want to be in competition with one of the big guys and then we make this investment and then that's very difficult for us. But we're trying to look at innovative ways to be able to diversify our earned income. So it's a very real thing. It is something that we want to do with the plans of the new project and do both renovate, new build and renovation at the same time. So hopefully that answers so that you can think where we are, you know, our concession area already, you know, where it is, it'll stay in that area, but we already have seating for 44 in the lobby. It's not being used during the day. We want people to come in and see our own exhibits, but again, having that foot traffic and partnering with another nonprofit where we are already got that air conditioning on, it's really no overhead to us. So we see it as a marketing tactic to be able to get people to come in and then ask what else is going on in the building. So hopefully that gives you a better sense and I can promise you, we don't see it as them putting a burden on us. We see it as definitely a better business plan for us moving forward as a community partner with this other nonprofit to provide access and people walking in and out of our doors. Second thing too, the name of putting Bradenton somewhere on the building. Okay. Everybody knows I'm a Bradentonian. I love this place even though, you know, I was only, I celebrated my 10th birthday here, but I feel as though I am truly, you know, Sarah Studios, you know, being sensitive to the Beards, you know, have provided $5 million to put their name on that building. And the Manatee Performing Art Center, we are actually researching with a family that that building's name could possibly change and that's $10 million. So I am sensitive to the city of Bradenton having their name somewhere on the campus. So I had a conversation with Mr. Perry about doing something really cool across the street from the performer. So the performer's the art piece that's going in front of Sarah Studios. Okay, so if you could, something really cool because we're changing that corner because that's the parking lot. So right now, all of you guys use the parking lot except the one who likes to park on the grass, but the, and, and it's not Mary Ann and it's not Pam and it's not Lisa. So Josh, I don't know because I don't track your car.
It's a blue Bronco, it's not tough to find.
It's in the parking lot.
You guys know where the parking lot is, you have to get in on Seventh and we only have that one little walkway that's almost in front of the Performing Art Center. We want to open up the corner, okay? And so you will have a really cool walkway coming from the parking lot right there on the corner so that you can walk directly across the street to Sarah Studios. And on that walkway, because we want to make sure it's ADA so that it actually has a ramp, something really cool with the city of Bradenton sign so that it really is encompassing the campus, not individual buildings. I've already told Mr. Perry that, you know, if we wanted to put a really great big sign at the expense of the city of Bradenton on the back of the stage house on the Performing Art Center, because then you would see it from both bridges coming over, that would be the ideal location. But from the Performing Art Center's perspective, this is a really important next phase for us to be able to bring new programming at both the amateur level as well as the Performing Art Center level, a performance level.
No, Ms. Barnaby had.
Well, and, and, and thank you for that. And I'm, I'm wondering if we've gotten a little into the weeds. Mr. Rudisil, what's coming in front of us today right now is the motion or considering the action to take with the sale contract and that before any more approval is given on the site plan, wouldn't that have to come through the regular process? We're not being asked to approve the site plan right now.
No, and I, and I think that, that's why I wanted to bifurcate the discussion because I think they are two very different things. But yes, the first component is the, essentially the termination of the lease conveyance of the property and that is what is on the table today.
Ms. Moore.
So I appreciate your explanation and for me, this is boiling down to the support of the Art Center and the Manatee Performing Art Center because I agree with Councilwoman Coker that I'm disappointed that we're going to be potentially eliminating that aspect of it. I just don't think it's going to plan for the growth that we hope that we're constantly trying to encourage. And I also don't like always feeling like, you know, kind of like walking away, like not totally satisfied. But that said, so, okay, that's my background. As far as what we're legally here doing today, so as far as what we're approving, we're approving the termination of the lease and the conveyance to the tenant. So I have two things for you and the first one is I only saw, I saw deeds from the city to the tenant and to, I believe, only one of the nonprofits. And the termination doesn't condition the termination on those conveyances, but I feel like I would feel more comfortable if they did.
Yeah, I agree with you and that's the type of thing that we still need to go through the, I mean, to be honest with you, didn't give, we did look at the documents, but until we actually had the deal finalized, we weren't going through and really giving a legal review to these documents. And I agree with you, that's the sort of thing we'd be looking for.
Okay.
Is because that is clearly part of the deal and the, part of the reason that the council would be authorizing this termination. And so, yes, we would ensure that that's part of the, part of the agreement.
The deed is going to the developer and, or the tenant and then the tenant is conveying to, and so we're making the termination and conveyance subject to future conveyances to the nonprofits. Is that right?
Yes, I agree with you. That should be part of the documents.
Okay. And then, and then the, the second, like just, so I guess it's, I don't know if it is the second half of what you're trying to bifurcate, but this resolution contemplates that we know what the project is.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not recommending the board adopt that resolution.
Okay.
That was presented by council for the applicant and I don't think it's appropriate. I'm not saying it was inappropriate that they drafted it. I'm saying that the, right, having the council adopt that type of resolution there, and Robin may need to come up and address this. My understanding is, you know, they have development approvals on that site, right? And so there is a certain level of discretion with the planning director to approve minor amendments to that plan. And so I think what the parties wanted, and I don't know if this was as much the planning director or not, was to get a comfort level from the council with some of the items that, that she might be looking at approving as a minor amendment. And I think that's the part that I think maybe she was looking for some guidance from the council to say, hey, these are some of the things they're suggesting, they're reducing the unit count, they're increasing the parking, you know, things like that. And I'm looking at approving this administratively or maybe not, I, maybe I'm talking out of turn, but that was kind of my understanding of why this concept was coming in front of the council.
And typically, you know, a change between a minor amendment and a major amendment, it, it has to do with thresholds and usually if it's increasing something, you're increasing your coverage, you're increasing your square footages, you're increasing your, and so I think what they're talking about is a net decrease. So we haven't fully determined, because we haven't fully reviewed the project on whether or not this would be a minor or a major amendment. I do think there are some things that don't necessarily fall within the zoning per se, like there is an allowance, as I said before, for retail, but if you really want the retail in there, that's, I don't know that the resolution necessarily for the PDP necessarily requires it. So, and if it is your, now we pushed hard for, when Catalyst came through, to have that retail on the ground floor because it was our understanding that that was the expectation. So I think that's in part, like, we can't really bring the full project to you today because if it's coming back before you as a quasi judicial item, that's a whole separate discussion and so we can't really get into that. But I think we're. But I think we're trying to get a feel for, you know, is, is what we pushed for before, is that still something that the city council wants? And, and I just, I don't know that we can really answer that question today. You know, in, in this format, I think we need to, we'd need to come back to you. But it may not be, under the code, a required major amendment to the PDP.
So my, my question is, and again, I don't disagree. I want to have as much retail in everywhere and have it filled and being used. My question is, what are we as a group willing to give for that? Because if it's a failure and we do a project that's going to fail because we required something or we asked for something, what are we willing to give for it? Because every other one that's been required lately has, we've given them stuff for. And they're still struggling with. And, you know, and again, we haven't, we're at that infancy. I, I'm very good friends with the Jimmy Johns guy. And he fought to stay down here. He wanted to be there. But after five years, he couldn't afford it. And again, we know, is it five years away? Is it two years away? Is it 10 years away? You know, so the, the question is, what are we willing to do or require if it fails or if it succeeds? Ms. Moore?
I think that related to that question, though, is the important question of why. And, and I'm.
Why what?
Why are they failing? There's something about our, our desire to rejuvenate, revitalize downtown that is not quite working, in my opinion. Like there's a missing piece that we're just not.
Yeah, that's called people.
Sure. And, and I, I'm struggling with distinguishing this project from requiring it, or just wanting it generally in other projects. I mean, I hear what you're saying about a larger tenant or, or square footage. But at the end of the day, I've always been concerned about vacancy because I haven't seen a path to getting there. But it doesn't mean I don't want it.
No, I agree. I got a question for Mr. Perry. Can you come forward, Mr. Perry? This, this will go to some of that, and I'll come right back to you, Ms. Coachman, if that's okay. Mr. Perry, are five retail spaces in the parking garage, are they at market rate for most retail spaces in a community?
Probably at about 50% of what market rate is.
And have you talked with any of the owners in those shops? And if they were at market rate, would they still be open today?
I know that several have had economic challenges. There's a couple of different ways of, of, of evidence to support that. And it's mostly anecdotal. But when I go home at 5:30, half of them are closed, even though the lease says they're not supposed to be. Particularly on certain days, the earlier days of the week. And then like, I didn't tell you all, but I'd also been informed by someone that there's a good possibility that one of them won't be renewing. And we'll see what happens with that. I don't know if that to be true. I haven't had direct conversations with that individual. But I was advised of that. You, you make some good points about, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? When you look at it, we don't have a lot of housing downtown. I mean, when you, what, other than Riverdance and River Song, where is the multifamily? Where are the heads that come down there? I don't see, when I leave at 5:00, 5:30 every night, what I see is cars leaving to try to get to the Green Bridge and go this way, that way. I don't see a lot of pedestrian traffic, which isn't uncommon with downtowns. But if you go to St. Petersburg, where I used to live, they have USF St. Petersburg there. They have all kinds of different nightly activity. So it's a much more, the duration is programmed a lot more. I'm sure it's slower in St. Petersburg on a Monday and Tuesday, just like it is here. But they have so many deer.
I don't want to keep going too far on that. But, but the reason I did that, because I've talked with several of them. And they're struggling to just make ends meet. And some of them are working without staff. And they're getting very tired of doing it. That's why they're closing early, even though we could say you're breaking the lease. And, and again, it's about wanting to have to do it. And I fought as hard as some of you are fighting right now to make sure that retail was in there. And I wanted more retail all the way down. And Mr. Allen would remember this. I was so disappointed when we didn't put retail all the way down Third, from the corner to the chamber. And now I'm glad we didn't. Because I would have hated to be driving there. But one thing I made sure was that they set it up that the floor, if we, if all of a sudden we could get a Columbia Restaurant in there or something, that that floor was made flat. So we could then change it into it. And that was, I was promised that that could happen. But I agree with you 100% in talking about it. But until we get the heads in beds, we don't know what's going to happen. And unfortunately, sometimes the heads in beds, I'm going to ask them the question. If it's not asked before we're done, what are they willing to put in? Are they willing to put something in there or make it where it can be retrofitted? Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. But to do that in a way that's going to say 100%, if you don't put 9,100 square feet of retail, we're not approving it, you know, is something that we've done for 60 years in this community and killed projects on the sand pile. And again, it's just my opinion from what I've been through over the last, what is it, 12 years now, from 2013? And like, I agree with you, Ms. Moore, 100%. It's a long 12 years. That still, it doesn't seem like anything's happening. And this will be the catalyst here, not Catalyst Company, but this property here that we fought for, that will make some of that, and then those projects will happen. So, Ms. Coachman, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was trying to hold on to what I wanted to say. Excuse me. I agree with you. I agree with you also, Councilwoman Coker. We want to see mixed use. However, we also need to be strategic. We want things to be better. But we can't just say, to make it better will be mixed use, mixed use, mixed use, mixed use. Because we already are seeing that our mixed use isn't quite taking off like we would like. So that might be something we need to study. But not everything we do to revitalize downtown or in this area has to be mixed use. There's some things that are going to have to be something to drive the purpose or, you know, function of mixed use. So we just have to be strategic. Can't just do it all the same. Sorry.
Thank you.
That wasn't all that I wanted to say, but in brevity.
Well, I, I think what we've seen in these projects that have worked and haven't worked is it's not necessarily just retail for the sake of retail, but it's got to be the right retail. I mean, you've got plazas that are closing. You've got businesses, malls that are closing. The Soto Square Mall is a prime example. Great location, but nothing's in there. And as far as what Mr. Perry's saying about downtown, and I think you may have used the term emerging downtown. With due respect, and I live downtown, so do you, Mr. Mayor, what we want is that emerging downtown. Right now, we're in eventual downtown. Because we have eventually, these projects are going to be coming online. And I think once we can move to get that done, then we become emerging and we become that draw. Not just the people that are leaving at 5:30 in the afternoon, but are coming in at 5:30 in the afternoon.
And I think when you said 20 years ago, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, when some of the projects were killed and the streets rolled up at 5 o'clock, we're not quite rolling up at 5 o'clock anymore. But we're still on that verge of that tipping point. And where is that tipping point? And we keep hearing from the, the REC people and all that, it's heads in beds. But what brings those heads in beds? And the reason that, that everything that I've tried to look at and learn from over all the years and really embrace the cultural arts part of it is most people come to the Arts Center, maybe the Performing Arts a little bit more because there's nighttime activities. But they're still not spending their dollars down here first. I agree, we need that. But we need the people here to get that. And some of the projects are, are, if we allow it to be killed because of that, and again, I'm not saying, you know, we are and things. But if we allow some of those things to happen, then we're still in the same spot. We're spinning, we're on that hamster wheel and nothing's changing. And so I have changed a little bit. Because I would not have voted to build that parking garage if it didn't have those retail in it. And that was a struggle to get. But we got it. And it's, it's working, but not to that next level yet. And again, I think that a couple of the business owners that I've talked to, you know, had a lot of hope. And now they don't. And that's sad. You know, and I, I wanted a sandwich shop in there more than anything. We didn't get it.
And that's it. It's what goes in those retail spots is also.
But they're also looking at a market rate. You know that the big retailers and, you know, grocery stores, and I mean, the number one grocery store now is Publix probably. Publix will build a grocery store a mile apart. Because they did the demographics. And we heard the story yesterday that a Publix is a $300,000 a day store. If it's less, it's a failure. If it's more, it's not going to sustain because they can't. So they'll look and say, okay, we're making $1 million at this grocery store. We got to get one here and here, within a mile of each other, to get it back to $300,000. And that's from the Publix people. You would think, well, why wouldn't you want to make a million at one store? And that, they can't sustain it. They can't keep the people, they can't keep the staff, can't keep those supplies in there and do it in theirs. So that's what we need to get. What is going to bring a $300,000 Publix to downtown? It's heads in beds. Then the other will grow. So, you know, again, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying what I learned as a council president. I don't have a vote, so, you know. Mr. Perry? Oh, I thought Mr. Hatfield had something. I'm sorry, did you have something you wanted to say?
In my younger life, I built retail. I built over 2 million square feet of it all around the South, seven states. Built a lot of Walmarts, Targets, Winn-Dixies, Publix. And I can tell you today, we got approval on Riverdance when we built that. They wanted some retail, we put it in there. And it's 15 years later. The mayor just told you they're paying those people to stay there. On our last project up at Preserve and Shoreview, your original approval was retail. We agreed to try to do it. Two years later, the best we could do is put a Dunkin' Donuts on the corner. It's the cost, it's over $100 a square foot to build just small retail. You're going to have to get $30 to $40 a square foot. That'll never happen in this market right now. Because they can't afford to pay that rent because their sales won't be high enough. But our compromise on our plan in Phase One was that we're putting the, I think it's 6,000 feet was Catalysts' retail space along Third Avenue there. What nobody's talked about is in that plan is live and work units. You live upstairs, you rent down. And we're willing to try to do that. We can always convert that later if we have to. And we've done that in Atlanta. It's been pretty successful in some spots. But mostly it's where it's a huge mixed use project with thousands of units and thousands, tens of thousands of square feet of retail. And that's usually with a master. We, we try to get Whole Foods to come on that site 20 years ago. Or not 15 years ago. Right where we're building right now. And they said exactly what you said, Mayor. Until you have enough people, rooftops is what they, they didn't use heads in beds back then. You called it rooftops. And in that roof, if you have people down, then the retail will come. You got to get the people there first. You don't put the retail and then bring the people. That just doesn't work. But we'd like for you to go ahead and prove and get this ground lease turned into a fee simple in order that we can deed it to the players and the Arts Center. We will sit down with the planning people and go through the PDP. And we need to move fast. But if we can move fast, we'll, we'll compromise as much as we can. But right now, just, it'll sit there for the next five, 10 years because it's too small. Otherwise, you're just going to be mom and pop types, small units.
Mr. Perry?
I think it was a good debate. Obviously, we have to kind of consummate it here with some action or inaction. What's before council basically is request to allow the mayor to execute documents that would provide for the transfer of a lease conveyance to a fee simple ownership conveyance. And we would require it to be predicated upon transfer of the Arts Center and the Performing Arts Center as well. We could put a provision in there that it was be predicated on that construction would start within a certain period of time. So that it, it lays any kind of concerns about further delay. What that does is it leaves open the issue regarding the retail space, the mixed use. That obviously was a fairly, it was a positive debate. I think what Councilman Kramer said about emerging downtown was a great takeaway because that's what it is. And it, it, it kind of goes into what Mr. Allen and Mr. Hatfield was saying too. And this whole debate about heads in beds, whether that will do it. Council Coachman's comments, I don't want to summarize everybody's, but the right retail. You know, it's interesting, you put an Oak and Stone in there. That's pretty good retail. They do a pretty good business. That rooftop bar, that does a pretty good business. Couple of those things in our retail space, not so good a business. So it probably does have to do a lot with that as well. So everybody had pretty positive things to say that, that were thoughtful. But it's time to make a decision if you want. You don't have to. And I think Mr. Rudisil should probably have the last word on just advising you as far as if we do move forward with these conveyances, what that means. If you're okay, I'd like to hear from Mr. Rudisil. I don't want to play on.
What, if there was to be a motion now, what would the motion be to?
I think the motion would just be to, to authorize the mayor to execute documents necessary to provide for the termination of the lease and the transfer of the, of the property as described in the agenda materials. And that's all subject to legal review.
And may I friendly amendment?
Let's get a motion and we'll get a second and discussion if it comes down.
So move.
Okay, moved by Mr. Kramer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby, discussion, Ms. Moore?
Also contingent upon the conveyances to the two nonprofits.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was.
And that is described.
He didn't actually say that in the motion just now.
No, but I did reference the agenda materials and that is described in there.
And also not to be including, but we're not dealing with the resolution today.
Correct. The development approvals are a separate item. And so that would either be, again, either Ms. Singer is going to determine that whatever changes they're proposing can be done administratively through a minor amendment. If she determines that they can't be, then it'll be coming back before the council.
And since we are terminating a lease and the future rents are being forgiven and.
Not forgiven.
Well, not going to be as much.
No, we're going to make, if you look at what REC gave us last week, it's going to be a lot more over the life of the contract.
It's a present value cash payment that will earn interest along with a note that will earn interest. And so it should actually, based on the math from REC, be more than what we're receiving.
What we were receiving if we waited 90 years to get it. We're not forgiving anything. We're just converting it and getting more upfront. And then also.
So if things don't go forward, we're still be getting more than what the lease would have been? If nothing's ever built?
Well, no, not, but we.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. I want to have a, that it's going to go forward.
And right. Discount for the transfer to the Arts Center.
I just want to make sure it's going to go forward and it's not going to stay vacant. That's all.
If we put a lot of restrictions on it, it might stay vacant.
Yeah. There's already stuff on there. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not putting the restrictions. Those restrictions are kind of already there. They were put on a long time ago.
Is it, Mayor? Is it possible to have some time limit in connection with the? I guess not, as I'm saying it, I don't think it.
Well, they want to get it going, I think. That's why they're here today.
I mean, the answer, the answer is yes, we could, we could do that. It would need to be in the, some, you know, we'd need to prepare an agreement related to that. Are we talking about timing on the development of, of the parcel?
I just want to make sure it's going forward.
Right.
Well, they want to break ground in February, so. Well, they want to break ground in February, so.
Great. I like it. I doubt they want to be tied to that, but.
We're going to be here until 3 o'clock if we don't know.
I just, what? What?
No, so, all right. So we have a motion by Mr. Kramer, second by Ms. Barnaby, to do what's in the agenda and we'll go moving forward with that conveyance. Anything else, Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, and we've had a lot of discussions. So we'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Is there a timing thing on this? I guess I'm not understanding. So all we're doing basically is approving for you to.
After it's all the legal stuff has been done with Mr. Rudesal to convey the property.
Deed it up.
To approve.
A purchase.
Yes.
And that's it.
Right, so what, let's just be clear that what's being approved is termination of lease, conveyance to the riverfront partners, subject to, A, the, the payment terms that are in there and also the caveat that it is conditioned on the conveyances to the art center and the performing art center. That's what would be approved by the council, subject to our reviewing the documents.
The loan or the additional monies would be tied to that other piece of property. We'd be the first mortgagie on it.
It would be secured by the, by the first mortgagie there. The only thing that remains, which is the concern of Counselor Coker is how quickly construction would start. And what the issue there is, is that they want to start fairly quickly. I've talked briefly with Mr. Hatfield just now. And I think 12, 12 months to 18 months. I, I think it's going to be a lot faster, but they were suggesting 12 months. I suggested 18. The issue becomes what is your remedy if they don't?
Well.
And so we could put a provision in there to have an acceptable remedy of liquidated damages agreeable to the parties. So that your issue regarding, are we getting more or less of the lease? If we put a nominal interest rate in there or something like they pay penalties, it would incentivize them to get moving on it.
May I?
Once you transfer the property, transfer the property. That's my take. I'm not a real staple there. Really didn't do very good at that class in law school, but aside from, aside from that, yeah.
Ms. Moore.
I think that that would not be a bad idea because I think to your point, the, the way we got to the buyout was actually assuming construction. So the purchase price really only makes sense if the project actually happens. So I think that's a good point.
Well, that's not a.
It is potentially acceptable.
Well, as long as that gets addressed, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that. I, I mean, I'm fine with it. I want to see this go forward. I do not want to get in the way of it, but I just feel like I have to say it.
I agree. All right, Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
Thank you. Great discussion. And they've heard what we said and everybody hopefully watches it and hears what we say that we want stuff now so we can get those other things now. Mr. Perry, City Administration, collective bargaining agreement.
I'll leave that over to the police department.
All right. Yep. Hello, Mr. Driscoll.
Good afternoon. Paul Driscoll for the Police Department. I didn't know I was speaking on this, but the collective bargaining agreement for both the rank and file and the lieutenants have an agreement for the article on the pension, the drop program to extend it from five years to eight years. It was ratified by both collective bargaining units and it comes before council for approval.
Okay, and there's, there's the reason that we moved the other reading because we felt that this needed to be approved before we had the other first reading?
Correct. The contract needed to be approved before. The, the contract allows the ordinance to be changed, so the reading kind of has to.
Go after.
It's more of a procedural thing.
Yeah, procedure. Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Driscoll, in the past, whenever we've had these things come forward, people have gotten with council members, whether they were from the union or through the administration, where this would have been explained completely to us. And when I sit here and look at it, with the drop program going from five to eight years and we have, currently have an ordinance that says that it's, that we go by five years, I feel like you're getting the cart before the horse. I think the council and the city needs to change the ordinance before we accept this. I feel like I'm kind of being shoved in a way I don't want to go.
Maybe Mr. Rudesal can comment on it as well, but the, the ordinance is changed as a result of the agreement and the collective bargaining agreement. All the parties have to.
I don't think you can change an ordinance that way. I think it has to be the city council approves the changing of the ordinances.
Yeah, an ordinance is a legislative enactment of the city council. So that's not something that technically can be agreed to in a contract. What you would typically see is you'd have an agreement and it would say that it is subject to the council adopting the amendments to the ordinance to implement it. Which, I mean, just, I, I don't know what's, what's in these documents, but that would be typically how we would do it on, like if we had a settlement agreement or something like that that required the city to implement an ordinance, you'd just say, you know, that this is our agreement. This is what we're going to do. This is subject to the legislative body adopting the amendments to the, to the code of ordinances.
And Mr. Rudesal, we have a separate attorney that handles, we, we work with.
Greg Harrington.
I was going to say Greg Harrington. I was going Harrington and I didn't think that was right. So normally you are not involved in drafting any of this type of union things. It's, it's usually a very specific attorney handles it on the, on the side of the city. And that's where I think the, the mix up is. I, I don't think that we can approve this with you all thinking that it's changing the ordinance because it's not.
I actually spoke to Mr. Herring and he actually agreed with me that procedurally it should occur this way. Because if we were to change the ordinance before the contract was agreed to, it would technically be an unfair labor practice because the contract wasn't agreed to. We can't arbitrarily change an ordinance to change a benefit to the employees without that.
But I think I'm being asked to do something illegal here by approving something where our ordinance states that it's a certain way. Not that you intend us to do anything illegal. I did not mean to leave that impression and I apologize.
No, no.
But again, I, I feel like the cart's before the horse. And I feel like this was put here and, and nobody got with any of, I mean, I'm used to being, at least having some sort of briefing, particularly with labor matters. Because it is very, the things that you can and cannot do, it's, it's very restrictive. There's things that, that need to be done a certain way. This is just very different from anything I've ever seen the entire time I've been up here.
I, I don't know what else to say. I spoke to Mr. Herring. He agrees with me.
Why is Mr. Herring not here today?
He didn't think he needed to be, probably.
So I, I kind of, I see Ms. Barnaby where, I don't, maybe, and maybe because I hear so much stuff about what's going on before, and again, we can't talk about it.
No, we can't.
So we couldn't approve an ordinance that changed their contract unless they approved their contract.
Right.
So it's, and, and this benefits the chief and the department.
And the city.
By going to eight years and it's a zero cost impact to the pension or the city.
It should actually be a savings.
It'll be a savings overall. And a lot of places, COVID changed a lot of things with the five and eight years and people staying on. But I remember back on that. So some of that is where, like you said, it's cart before the horse or, so I don't see, I, I see where you're saying it. But I was just going by what Paul and Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Herring were talking about with Mr. Williams. And I wasn't aware that nothing ever got to the council to talk about it. Paul called me last week, or maybe through the chief, I think it was, that said, we can't have the one before the other, so you got to switch it to the end.
Well, and, and in your role as police commissioner, yes, you have a lot. You, you get a lot more information than just us as regular council members.
But I couldn't tell you about it.
No, and I, I didn't, I didn't want you.
And I said you.
This is just, again, I, I am very uncomfortable right now and I don't know what can be done to make me feel comfortable.
I have a question.
Now let me go to Mr. Kramer and then, yes, and then Ms. Coachman.
So today's the first reading of the ordinance, correct? Could we have the first reading of the ordinance, then at the next council meeting, have our potential approval or at least vote on the contract prior to a vote on the ordinance?
Yes, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I.
Which will give time for discussions and.
Yeah.
briefings and everything.
Yes, I, I, I don't see any reason that, that couldn't be done. I think we want to make sure that when we are adopting it, when we're adopting, approving the collective bargaining agreement, that it is clear in the, in the motion that that is contingent upon the city council adopting the changes to the ordinance.
This is a benefit. I don't know if the chief wants to come up and we apologize for not having the chief or Mr. Herring talk to each one of you. I didn't know that wasn't done and, yeah, Mr. Perry.
I, I think that the, the union is, is okay with this. It seems like the, that it wasn't, that wasn't an issue. I understand what Mr. Driscoll's saying, but you've mentioned that you can't pass the ordinance prior to passing the contract because that would be violating of the existing deal. But you actually could get a waiver of that from the union who wanted this as well. To say, we wouldn't consider that a, a, a prohibited practice.
But we wouldn't have known that unless they voted.
Or you get, you get a letter from their lawyer. We've gotten, we've gotten letters from their lawyer before I distanced myself from this issue. We did get letters from their lawyer. I don't think on this very issue. And I think Mr. Rudesal's proposal might work. And I, I think Counselor Kramer, as far as I agree with him to do a first reading, then a second reading too. But like I said, I distanced myself. I'm just trying to get something to work.
Good afternoon. Certainly I, I apologize for, for maybe not stepping in, in the past couple of weeks and educating you all. I was under the impression that that had been done. This is something that I've been asking for, for over the past year. And unfortunately now we're bumping up against a very, very significant time limitation on this. If, if this doesn't roll over the next two council meetings, I will lose employees. I will lose employees. I will lose a very valuable employee and it's unfortunate that it's gotten to this deadline. The, the drop program is, is unique with every agency. You have seen over the past couple of years, most agencies have gone from a five year to either a seven year or to an eight year. And it's really just oftentimes dependent upon the, the flavor. The reality is, is young folks like the old folks to go away, to make room for the young folks to assume positions of authority. It's, that's a reality with a lot of departments. And so it's a balance as a chief to figure out when the right time is to, to come in for the ask and, and to recognize that it's better for the department and better for the city. That happened early last year. We looked at our numbers. We looked at our future forced retirements coming up. We looked at what our hiring looked like and our attrition and realized it was the right time to start talking about it. We started talking about this last year. Lot had to go into this. Brian Thiers is here from the pension board. The pension board had to, to come on board and, and do the cost analysis, I think in conjunction with the city. I don't know the exact numbers, but it is a cost savings to the city. This saves the city money. It saves me money. It keeps valuable, seasoned folks, detectives, supervisors in the seats, doing the job that I'm comfortable and confident they can do for the next three years. I don't know about the dynamics of this reading, not reading, whatever, but I, I will tell you that I would hate for something to, to get in the way of, of a necessity and, and any delay on this. I'm going to lose some folks and that would really be unfortunate to let, you know, to let this kind of administrative stuff. Because, because again, this has been on my radar and I've been pushing this for the past, at least, at least seven months to get before you all.
All right, so Mr. Rudesal, is this something that we have to vote on, on this particular item on the agenda to approve or not approve? Or do we do the reading and then we can, this, just because they've already approved it and then we're just changing the ordinance if we did that?
It's my understanding, again, these aren't my items. It's my understanding that these are on the agenda for approval.
Well, the first reading isn't. First reading, just the first reading to get.
Right, first reading is separate. That's just an ordinance title that has to be read.
So what you're proposing where we would be handling this in the most appropriate manner than we can, that we can right now, is to choose to vote up the collective bargaining agreements, both of them up or down, and then do the first reading to set the second reading. I'm trying, I'm trying.
And to get detailed information so you can feel comfortable.
So, well, that's a separate question.
Should we table this until our first meeting in January?
That part, I think, is a question for the council. If you're comfortable with the agreements that are in front of you, my recommendation would be to vote to approve them conditioned on the city council adopting the ordinances necessary to implement it. If you're comfortable with the agreements, that would, that would be my recommendation.
So how would this have worked in the past, Mr. Driscoll? If one group or if both groups voted it down? It would have never even come to council. We wouldn't have had to change an ordinance. So the only way you can know is if they want it, is if they voted up or down. Is that?
Yeah, correct. If they had not ratified the contract, it would, it would not be in front of you today. But we also would not be able to change the ordinance because it wasn't agreed to.
Right, but so, I mean, it's kind of.
Wouldn't have the need to change.
Right, but so I don't know if there's another way to do it other than information out a little bit better. So, Ms. Moore. Ms. Coachman, you had something, I'm sorry.
I, I'm, I'm, I understand that we can't change an ordinance before we even have the reason to change it. So I don't understand why the quick maneuver that was done won't work today. I mean, if we approve the agreement and then the first reading to also, to move it forward and then the second reading to either, you know, approve changing the ordinance or not, I don't understand why at this moment we can't still stay in order. I mean, maybe I'm just.
It might speak to it, maybe helpful. I don't know. I, I'll, I guess direct it to you, Mr. Driscoll. The, the introductory paragraph to the proposed article number 34 has us actually agreeing to draft and adopt an ordinance to effectuate these. So maybe that's how we get there. We're, we're actually contractually agreeing to modify our ordinance.
I agree with that.
And at this, the pension was important. They had to go through their process to make sure they did their articulation of is this going to cost to the pension? Is it going to cost? And the city had to do theirs at the same time. So it showed that there was no cost to either one. Because if there's a cost, then you have to evaluate it differently, you know, and then see. So, yeah, no.
There were a lot of moving parts on this.
Yeah. And there is a timing issue because of staffing for the chief. So that was one thing that, but I don't know about the other logistical stuff with Greg Herring and all of that. I mean, again, we've got to do a better job and I'll put myself in that of making sure we get the right people because I can't talk. So basically if we approved Article 34 and 36 contingent on the ordinance second reading and approval or denial, it'll make the difference when we approve or deny it.
Right, I'm, I'm okay proceeding that way. If you, if, again, if, if the council's comfortable, I would recommend adopting. I would recommend adopting the proposed, I guess, amendments to the collective bargaining agreement subject to the
Second reading and-
city council adopting the proposed changes to the ordinance.
And doing the first reading today because that gets it to the second reading.
Sure. The first reading doesn't have any effect other than it's part of the procedural requirements.
I understand why it's now coming after approving the agreement. I get that maneuver.
All right. Any other questions? All right, Chair, we entertain a motion. And if we do these motions, they have to be separate?
Yeah. I think it'd be better.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Florida PBA lieutenants effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026, as ratified on November 22nd, 2024.
Second. Wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry.
What you gonna put the contingent?
Contingent on council approving ordinance-
Required changes to the ordinance.
Required change to the ordinance, which is ordinance 4057.
And we have a motion and a second, and we've had quite a bit of discussion. So we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Okay, approved, five to zero. We entertain a motion on IG.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Florida PBA officers, detectives, and sergeants effective October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2026, as ratified on November 22nd, 2024, pending approval by council of ordinance 4057.
Second by Ms. Coachman. All right. We have a motion and a second. We have to start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two. Approved, five to zero. Thank you.
Yes.
She didn't vote.
Did I say two?
Yes, she said it, but she just went right on.
I thought I heard, yeah. No, what I heard was, rah! I thought I heard, yes. Two?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. I heard the tiger over there going. All right, Madam Clerk.
First reading of ordinance 4057, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Charter and related laws, subpart B related laws, Article IV Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section 26 Deferred Retirement Option Plan, providing for separability of provisions, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. And the second reading of public hearing will be on January 8th, 2025.
Thank you. All right. All right, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business?
No, sir.
Council reports will start in Ward Five.
Considering the time, I will be extremely brief. I think some of the things that I was planning on commenting, I will put in my council. Is it my council corner coming up next? All right, then I'll take, I'll take care of that then, but other than that, everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, and happy holidays for any other holiday too.
Ward One.
Yeah, I, I was going to stay brief, only I did want to just give a shout out to Realized Bradenton and to the Barnaby family, just having the, you know, I think Winter Wonderland was a huge success. It makes me feel so good to be downtown and see all the families having fun. And I know a lot of people worked really hard to make it a success, so I just want to give that shout out. And then, and also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I know this has been a tough year. We're all kind of glad to see it go away. And I hope you're able to spend time with family and friends and really enjoy the holiday.
Ward Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that I had a very productive meeting out at Cortez Villas and have a long list of items that they would like the city to be looking at, so I will be getting with the appropriate people. I'm very happy to see that most of Manatee Avenue's resurfacing has been done. I don't know what we have to do, or if we could just get the manhole covers at the same level as everything else on the road. I think there's some sort of apparatus or collar that can be put there to raise the manhole cover up.
They will. They, they do that unfortunately last-
On night, yeah. It was the same thing. I complained.
I mean, I'm beginning to think that they might be in cahoots with the Dental Association because when you hit those manhole covers, it can knock a filling loose. So concerned about that. Also, wanted to thank Realized Bradenton as well for the continuation of Winter Wonderland and for the honor of naming the play area after the Barnaby family. My kids were deliriously happy. They thought that was wonderful.
And they brought back the snow.
And they brought back the snow this year. Also, thank you to Bill Ackles and his family because they are the ones that decorate our chamber and the rest of City Hall for the holiday season, and, and they do it as a family activity. So I think that's, that's kind of neat. They've, I, I think Bill, at this point, because both of his kids are grown, and now he's bringing in the next generation with his granddaughter, but he almost, he said he was going to stop it, and his kid said, "No, we're coming down. We're doing it." So I want to thank them for that. Also want to thank the St. Stevens third grade singers who came in yesterday. That was a lot of fun. And it always makes you feel like the holidays are right here when we get St. Stevens coming in and singing. And I think all of the, the staff here appreciate it and enjoy it. Unfortunately, do need to offer some messages of sympathy and condolences. One to the family of Corky Parker. His father, Ray Parker, worked at Public Works for many, many years, and Ms. Coachman and I went to high school with Corky, so it's, it's really kind of sad when you see someone that was such a great athlete and so vital being struck down by cancer again. Also to the family of Hazel Burnett, who was a lady that was very involved in our community and involved with probably all sorts of things. And I know that she had gotten up there in years and, and one of her daughters said, "She's just waiting to go home with Jesus now," and she's there and that's good for them. Also, the family of David Wilcox, local attorney, veteran, chair of the De Soto Celebration and the Kiwanis Club, a proud golden chief of Florida State University. And we want to send our deep, deep sympathies to his wife, Susan, and his son, Andrew. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a joyous Hanukkah, and warm wishes for a blessed Kwanzaa. And if you follow Seinfeld, Festivus for the rest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Ward Three.
It's always tough to follow Mrs. Barnaby, but I'll try. You may have seen, I don't know if the chief, do you have your morning band on or no? And I, and I'm not trying to call you out. I think, I thought it was your Honor Guard badge, which counts. But Captain Thiers there is wearing a morning bed, band, and that is for Charlotte County Deputy. He's sergeant, actually, posthumously promoted to sergeant. Ilio Diaz, who was killed in the line of duty Sunday by an assailant who shot him with a rifle in a traffic stop. Please keep his family and all law enforcement families in your thoughts this time of year. Going from one somber idea to another, the drop, when it came about years ago, was supposed to be done so the employees entering the drop could teach those who were going to be taking their place that job, which I think I did a decent job at. Captain Thiers might argue that or, or actually, no, he just gave me some kudos. That's nice. But that's the idea. It's not supposed to be a cash cow. And so to those who potentially, potentially might get three more years in the police department in that drop, I would hope they're put on notice that they need to be teaching their replacement what to do, because that's the real idea. Years and years ago, I think, oh, I'm not going to name names, but there were certain officers just like, "Oh, just, I'm in the drop. I'll just go work the desk," which now is handled by civilians because it didn't need to be handled by an officer, but back then we did. But that was just so they didn't have to go work. They didn't want to train people. They didn't want to be FTOs anymore. They just wanted to basically collect paycheck, and that's not what law enforcement's about. That's not what career employees in the city of Bradenton are about, and I want everybody to be, to know that. So, that said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It was nice to see the kiddies here yesterday. They're not used to seeing me with a different name tag on. They're used to seeing the St. Stevens name tag, not the city council name tag, but it's always wonderful to be around. If you're traveling these holidays, please be careful, be safe, and thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
I will also try to be brief. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Coker and Ms. Singer for agreeing to serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I am terming out, and I will miss that service. I enjoyed it, so I appreciate you all agreeing to do that. I really enjoyed both our workshop conversation and the conversation that the, the, I'm forgetting now what their name is, the Manatee Investor Group brought up. Because when I say, when I, if I sound critical about what we've done to date to further downtown, it's not intended to be that way. It's maybe, it's more of just like a hard look, you know? What's working, what's not, you know, what, what else can we try? I think right now we're a very cohesive, willing-to-experiment type of body, and, and I appreciate that. And that's kind of what my goals are always, just to continue the conversation so that we could kind of figure out what we've tried and not tried, and anything we might want to try. And in, along that vein, one of the things I think I didn't really say very clearly during the workshop was the notion of heads in beds. I'm wondering if there is benefit in expanding it, primarily because I think that if we could include areas that are downtown adjacent, like, of course, Northeast Bradenton, but also the Wears Creek area. I mean, I loved walking downtown the month I spent on that, in that Wears Creek little neighborhood, and my daughter is continuing to do it. I think there could be something to that, and I don't know what it is, but I just have a, I don't know. It, it's something that I think it would be interesting to explore. So I-
We already have some retail down there that could-
Yeah, like, just to see what, you know, who knows? I, I don't know. I don't, I, oh, I shared a podcast with you all. Any friends watching will make fun of that because I share all sorts of podcasts, so no pressure to actually, and I didn't share it with you, to be clear. I shared it with Ms. Melton. I am always sharing podcasts with zero expectation that anyone actually listens to them, but I did find that one in particular very interesting, nuts and bolts, 30 minutes of what grocery stores, you know, their considerations, their process. So for what it's worth, you can listen to the podcast or not because I'm completely accustomed to people not listening to the podcast. But yeah, so that's just my, you know, thoughts I'm kicking around. I think we're a creative, forward-thinking group, and I think that there's room for us to try something new. And Merry Christmas and, and all the happy holidays and great wishes for the upcoming year.
Yay.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to kind of respond to one thing you said because I, I think that you and I had talked a little bit about with, with, obviously, unfortunate tragedy that happened to you with your home and kind of living around different areas in the city for a while and seeing things differently. And that's really where, over the last 12, 13 years, from us moving from northwest Bradenton to kind of south area, then to downtown, has really opened my eyes of what you want and what you want to do, because most times when people are downtown and they leave, they don't come back. You know, they just go to their home, and then they search that little 15-minute circle, as Richard Florida talks about. And that's what the goal is, to try to make downtown those 15-minute little circles, because most people will walk 15 minutes. They won't walk 45. And so, and looking at a lot of that, and I've always been on the retail, but I also don't want to leave land empty again, like happened in a bunch of other places. So, you know, my, I agree with everything that was said today, but you've heard me talk about many, many, many times, how quick can we get it built? And that's, and not to the detriment of something, but we know that, and, and hearing that story yesterday about Publix, you know, you'll say, "Well, we can't get a Publix in downtown, but they'll build one within half a mile of one on State Road 70 or 64." And there's another one going on State Road 70 because it's a million-dollar store, and they don't want million-dollar stores a day. They want $300,000 stores a day because they can manage that without getting too many complaints. That was a very interesting story yesterday. So, you know, and you know the one-offs aren't there anymore. The mom and pops aren't there. And so I think that's, that's where my thoughts are in what we do. And we echo everybody, and, and, you know, unfortunately, this month has been a tough month for people that we know that we've lost and others that have been lost, but it's something that, you know, as we get older, it seems to happen more, and you just hope that those families get through the holiday season because that's the toughest time of the year. But let's just keep more, moving forward, upward and onward, and I think Ms. Singer's going to come up and say a couple of words in a minute and kind of talk about some other things and, and possibly a workshop we'll be having soon on some of that forward-moving stuff. But I'd just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and, and Festivus for the rest of us. Thank you. Ms. Singer?
Regarding building permits, what we're discussing, and since implementing Acela, we have seen over, close to 700 permits going fully through application on through issuance and in actually completion in some cases. And that, I think in large part is because of the storm damage created a lot of roofing permits, which are pretty quick to get out the door. We did have a little bit of a holdup just to having to get all those contractors re-registered, and we had a lot of contractors from out of town and out of state even, trying to register through our process whether or not they had permits that were coming through the city. But we are seeing approximately a nine-day turnaround, and that's on average. So you have a larger commercial permit or a single-family home permit. It'll take a little longer. And then on the other end of it, you have the over-the-counter permits, which again is generally rerooft and the AC change out, and we're, again, seeing a lot of those because of the storm. So we're about a nine-day average, and the goal, of course, is to get that all the way down to a one-day turnaround where we can, but for review processes, it's always going to take a little bit longer. So one of the things we wanted to bring you and probably are going to do it through a workshop item is to discuss the building permit fees. So the, the building official has done some research in terms of what other communities are charging, and also with the overage in our payouts over this last couple of years and how that's created a deficit and kind of absorbed the surplus that we had previously. So he was looking at about a 20% increase without changing our permitting structure. And because we've just implemented this new program, we don't really want to change our permitting structure, but we may go to something that's a little bit more like what the county charges in the future. But rather than bring this up as part of a regular meeting, it's a more lengthy discussion than that, so we want to bring that back to you in a workshop agenda sometime, I think, in January. So, did you all have any questions about permitting at this point?
It's, it's not totally related to what the subject matter. I'll wait for the workshop, but has there been any discussion about, are we really terminating or ending the fee waivers for anybody with storm-related?
Eventually, that will time out. I think the building official has to take a look at that. One of the things we're also hoping to do is we're seeing a lot of people who have, who potentially are doing work on their homes without the necessary permits. And so that's something that we have to go after, and I think waiving the fees, happy to do that, but people do need to get in for their permits.
Do the permit, yeah.
So we, we've got to make a judgment call on that. I think he's following what a lot of communities are doing in term, you know, including the county, in terms of waiver of fees. So we're, we're kind of going to go with the flow. We don't want to overly penalize people, but at the same time, we're starting to see issues with, and we're also starting to see, I have code enforcement here today. I'll explain that later, but people not doing work
Yeah.
that they need to, to clean up, for example. That they need to, to clean up, for example, docks. I see a lot of destroyed docks out there and it's time to kind of get on top of that. So it's, it's going to be a little bit of a squeeze. I think where we can give some latitude in permitting fees, we will, but we also need to make sure that people are getting in and getting their stuff done properly with license contract.
Sure, yeah, I definitely can appreciate the need for the permit. I'm, from a personal standpoint, I can tell you, maybe it's just me and the way that my spouse and I differ in what I'm now calling crisis decision-making characteristics, but it's hard to decide because there's so much funding that is potentially going to be available but not guaranteed and the cost of construction is so, you know, a lot of people now, I mean, just using me as an example, I did not anticipate having to do this work on my house or potentially demolish my house and rebuild it. And so it's an unexpected financial burden and, and because of that, it just makes decision-making a little bit harder because of the unknowns when it comes to how much money you're going to be spending, frankly. And so just, you know, for whatever it's worth, two cents, there could be legitimate reasons why people have not yet begun the work because I think for some of us, it is just a matter of, are you really just going to rehab and can I even? 50% rule, all the fun things.
Maybe it's an attorney thing because I can't seem to get mine to.
I know, I'm like, I'm ready to move on faith. Fred, not so much.
One thing that I just kind of make a comment more than anything, we've all probably got phone calls that the department is moving slow or the contractor told them that they haven't got the permit yet. And when they tell a homeowner that or a property owner, and then they call us and we check and the permit hasn't even been turned in yet because the builder is not trying to lose the business, they're wanting to just blame it to keep that person going. So we just got to make sure that, you know, we, and we've addressed those and most of the homeowners then have called back or all of a sudden the permit came in after they realized they called the City Hall and we've turned it around in a day. So, you know, and some of them are roof permits, some of them are drywall and different things, but, you know, they still need permits for just about everything. And that's, and, and again, one of the questions that came up was, why did you switch programs right in the middle of the storms? Well, this is a long-term process. It just happened to flow at the wrong time, but we didn't. And when they tell them that and they go, oh, okay. But most of the contractors I've talked to, if they ever deal with our county, same thing. So they're happy, you know, ultimately. So, but if you'd never done it before, or if you're a homeowner trying to do it, it's hard because some homeowners are trying to be their own general contractors and subbing things out. So that's.
That's hard. Wait till they get farther along.
So I know that a lot of questions get asked and I probably get more than most and just, you know, you know me, I don't come down and say, do this. I say, where are we? And then call them back and say, well, your contractor's never turned in a permit, ask them for the number. And all of a sudden, three days later, they have a number, you know, so.
Shout hands. Who else has had that happen to them? Where the person said, the city's not doing, and you go down there and they haven't even applied. Yeah.
So thank you.
I think owners should be CC'd on everything with contractors.
All right, so anything else, Ms. Singer? You said code enforcement is here?
Yes, so, see, I have code enforcement here with me today. They happy to announce that come, starting this new year, we will be fully staffed in our code enforcement division. It's been a little while. So that's great news. And so I'm going to ask Volker to come up and introduce some people. The sad news is, though, that we're losing one of our people. She's already trained her replacement, so in keeping with what you were saying before. So, yeah, Kimberly Murphy, after 14 years, is going to be leaving the city.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and Mr. Perry and Mr. Rudisil. This is a joyous event, no downer at all. Kimberly is retiring, which is bad for the city, of course, but great for her. Some of you may not know her very well. Kimberly, for the last 14 years, was the most important person in code enforcement. Without her, nothing would have worked at all because she kept everything, all the paperwork, all the dates and deadlines all in line, dealt with the minutes and everything. So I just wanted to thank her and give you an opportunity to see her one last time. She's happy to retire. Her husband had played a role in the city once in a while too, who works for the county, who helped us out with some GIS stuff. So the Murphy family has done quite a bit for the city. We want to officially thank her and wish her all the best in her retirement.
Thank you.
Good news is, we have hired a replacement for her already. Candy is going to, is our Candy Hood, she's going to be her replacement. So we hope it's going to be somewhat seamless. It's a lot to learn, but we think Candy can handle it. Also, I want to introduce Frank and Nick, who are our new, two new code enforcement officers. We have five positions and now we have all five positions filled, so I just wanted to introduce them. They are in training now, go through our training program with Mike and we think they're probably going to be ready to be released and.
Into the line.
Probably sometime in February. It might be March. It takes a while. We have a seven-week training program to begin with, so, and so that's, I just wanted to introduce them and we're glad to have them and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and happy holidays.
Sorry you're leaving, but glad you're retiring and welcome aboard.
She's pretty happy to be leaving. She really does.
Congratulations, Kimberly.
Yes, congratulations and thank you, gentlemen.
All right, any other department heads? Nobody out there? Well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll be adjourned.